Five thirty, can we bring this school board meeting to order, please? Stand and sweep the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review. We have a presentation from the New Hampshire School Board Association this evening, and what I'd like to do is, on the presentations, I would like to see if I could get a motion to adjourn at eight PM tonight. So we can get through that, get through a few things, but just for the sake of time, and I know that, you know, it'd be great to be able to move on. Some of us have some things going on afterwards, so...
I'll make that motion with, just to make sure that we don't miss something that we have to take care of tonight.
Yep.
I'll second.
Is there anything, Donna, that you feel like we need to cover tonight that you want to put it to the top of the list or prioritize?
I think that basically the, everything under new business.
Okay.
And nomination?
Yeah, and my nomination for my PE teacher.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? And we may have time to get through it, but I think we should just prioritize that stuff based on how...
B, C, and D will be quicker.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Did anybody else have anything under agenda review? Okay, can move on. Public comment? We're good?
Good.
All right.
Maybe on the next one.
Yeah. All right, so with that, let's go into a public hearing. We're looking to withdraw funds from the school technology fund here. And I know we had the, we had the proposals come to us at the last meeting, but did you want to put some detail on it or open the public...
I could, yes. I would like to, this, the purpose of this is so that both the principal and vice-principal can divest from the larger laptops that they have. They're very mobile in the schools. So I propose that they'd have a tablet, which we obviously don't have the money for that. So it's for their tablet setup.
With that, we can open the public hearing, right?
Yep.
Do you, Mary?
And you suggest going with Amazon?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank, I just...
They're less than half the price of Dell.
Yep. You need to deliver quicker.
Yeah, much. And a better warranty. So the price included in there was a four-year warranty that includes breakage.
Thanks.
And we're looking at a, it is a Dell product?
It is.
With a docking station, I assume, in the office and monitors?
Two monitors, docking station.
Okay.
Keyboard, mouse for each, yep.
Have any question, anybody have any questions about the system? Very good. Do you have any, any other questions or?
Public input.
Any public input at all?
For next.
Really missed me, huh?
Yeah.
No more days off.
So with that said, can we get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the fund withdrawal from the technology. And for a total of $4,375.90?
This one.
Oh, it's this one?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one, okay. I make a motion to approve $2,898.86 to be withdrawn from the technology.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. With that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. We're good there. Next, let's see, we have meeting minutes.
I make a, I make a motion to approve that we fill school board public minutes from eight, five twenty-five, with any amendments added.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Very good. And next, we'll go into presentations. We have Will Phillips from the New Hampshire School Board Association, and...
He's not here yet, so he's five forty-five is what I told him.
Oh, perfect.
So if we want to move on to the next thing, we can do that until he gets here.
Perfect. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Nothing under old business, so let's get into new business, then we can start doing that. Let's go ahead and start with item B.
Which is on page thirty-one.
Thank you. Yes, Donna?
So we, so we sat and met with our union reps to go over some positions that we wanted to bring forward right now, because we're still working on some. And so these are the ones, we did also add in that is not on here, because we can't run a before-school program without having the other staff to help run it as well. And so we were looking to have these ones approved, so that way we can move forward with getting staff to go and join these positions. So we did meet and we did talk about pay, because it's like $25 an hour, up to $25 an hour. And some of them were a flat rate. And so we've met with, we have a stipend committee per the agreement, and we did meet and we talked about them, and we were writing all the job descriptions. All the job descriptions have been going between all of the committee, which include two members of the school board, uh, school board, two members of the union, and they're looking at them and writing, we're writing them together. So it's really well. So this year, all of our stipend positions will actually have job descriptions to go along with them.
Oh, fantastic.
That's good. Sandra? Do we know whether these are going to be a flat rate or an hourly rate? Or do we have to approve them without the money and all?
You, yeah, you don't have to approve them, because it's up to the union.
Okay.
Which one we do, but we, like, for instance, the athletic director, that's going to be a flat rate.
Okay.
So we've negotiated certain ones like that.
Okay.
Mary?
If we can't find staff to fill these stipend positions, will it be offered to any community members?
I would, I don't think that it normally goes out to community members.
We haven't had a, we haven't had a problem staffing.
Yeah, and we already have people, like, we, I put out for the, a feeler for the before and after-school program and the staff for that, and I already have people interested in doing it, because that's one that we have to get started right away, because school starts in a couple weeks, so I need to make sure we have that. So we did that, I sent out the, I talked to them about the athletic director, because we have to schedule games. And so, you know, we're going to be, that should be sent out within the next couple of days, so...
Okay.
And then we talked about how these, really, these positions, the before and after-school program, the staff that are going to work at the athletic director, those are actually positions that should have, should have been sent out last year, right? Not at the beginning of the school year when you're trying to get it done. So at the end of the school year, we should have put out and said, who's interested in these positions? And then what we do is, we have them send a letter of intent or interest to our HR and that over here, and then we will pull them together. Our committee will get together again, and we'll look through them, and then we'll make the decision.
Oh, good. Okay, so it's not like first come, first served?
Nope.
It's you're going through it?
Nope, nope, we're going through the motions like it was, like if it was a job, yep.
Okay, great. Deal? I just said, given the situation that we're freshly stepping out of, I have concerns about the board not seeing what the dollar amounts look like and how they line up with the descriptions. And I don't know how to, I don't know how to handle it, because we're up against this truncated timetable, because school's starting. So I'm open to suggestions. I just feel like the board should see the initial agreements and what the stipend dollar amounts look like.
So what's hard is that some of them depend. Because how it reads is that you get paid whatever your pay is, but not more than $25, right? So do, and then we don't know how many hours they're going to work, right? Normally, these positions, it would just be a flat rate. You know, like the athletic director, I think it was at five thousand?
Four thousand five.
Four thousand, was it something like that? So there was like a flat rate, right? For just, for the athletic director. But the other ones were, you know, could be up to $25 an hour. So we're working with them and saying, okay, do we just make it $25 an hour and put a cap on it? Because according to their contract, we can only spend up to $18,000 on these positions. So that's what we're looking at.
We have an approval from the board from a couple years ago that we approve all stipends regardless. So I really, we should steer that course for the time being.
Okay, that's fine.
And again, I don't know how to navigate it, I don't want to make anybody's life difficult, but I really feel like that level of transparency needs to be brought forth for the time being, but...
What I can tell you is the before, the before-school program coordinator is $35 an hour. And that the staff that work it is $25 an hour. So I definitely know that. Because I put, I sent those out today, and I think those are one of the most important ones. And the, and then I think, what was the athletic director, was it four thousand?
Four.
And the athletic director was four thousand.
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, we had a form letter that told us all about each one, so that's, if we can go back to that.
A form letter, okay.
Yeah.
Michelle, did you? Your hand was up.
It was, but I lost my train of thought.
Okay.
Oh, yes, no, I got it back, sorry. Sorry.
Not too bad.
And the before-school program is in the budget.
It is in the budget.
That was approved in the budget. So that was based on last year having two at twenty-five and the coordinator at thirty-five, along with the FICR and retirement. So that will be obviously funded by the parents. So that is a time card, so it's not technically a stipend, but we're just calling it that.
Okay.
So if you want, it's going to be a time card, probably every two weeks, like it was last year.
Sandra?
So that was the coordinator's $35 an hour, and then the staff is $25 an hour? Does that, I mean, does that go against the CBA or anything like that, where it says that the cap is $25 an hour?
No, so what they, so, because we talked, we talked this out, right? So the coordinator also is a teacher in that position, right? So she also oversees kids, but she does more, so it's almost like two positions in one. So she will collect money, she'll talk to parents about funding, she, you know, does a lot of that stuff, the coordinating piece of it, where they do not. And so they agree that, yes, she should be making...
And she's a teacher?
She, yeah, so she works in the program, but she does more outside of that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we just, we need, just for the time being, we're down the road, you know, that we're making sure we don't, everything's above board and transparent, so I don't want to push back.
Yeah, I can also send you, because I put on the job description what the pay is.
Okay.
So I can send you the job description too for the, if you want to just approve the three tonight, I mean, we can, that way I can hire an athletic director and I can send you that, you know, later today.
Does anybody else feel about that?
Yeah, I...
I mean, we have the two in the budget, the athletic director or something, I remember that from last year anyway.
Yeah.
Bob?
I just don't want to get into rushing into something like we always did. And then it gets changed. It's just, we have, we have, I don't know if we want to call it bad blood, but we just want to watch out what we're doing here.
PT and C.
The ones that you're voting on tonight are all in the budget and have a line. Athletic director is in the athletic line. Morning program is in the morning program line, as you go, Kirk Allen. They all designated the amounts, so it's not like it was.
Okay.
Okay?
That's good to know.
It's very transparent in the notes, in the little book.
Perfect.
So those that are getting voted on to hire so that we can start school, they're all in the budget.
Okay.
And are the, are those three amounts included in the $18,000? Or is this separate?
No.
Those are separate?
Before school, before school is separate, it's a separate function.
Yep, and the after-school and the athletic?
After-school we're not voting on tonight, it's not starting yet.
Okay.
We're just doing the before-school coordinator and the two other...
The teach, the before... The staff or the program, okay.
And then the athletic.
And those, those are no, none of them are under the $18,000, it's all separate?
All separate.
Fantastic, that makes me feel better, because you can't calculate the $18,000 divided by all the stipends, by the hourly, when you don't have all the figures.
None of these are the eighteen, at all.
That makes me feel a lot more comfortable.
Yeah, that makes me feel better.
Can I get a motion?
Can you tell me the three again? Athletic director, after-school program, and what's the other one?
We're not doing the after-school. We said the two staff before school and coordinator before school.
And two staff at twenty-five.
I'll make a motion for the three open stipend positions to be filled.
I'll second.
Four, there's four.
There's four.
There's one athletic and three before-school.
Yes.
That's why I asked.
Did they get a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Before, aye.
Yes, before and athletic, yes.
So it is five forty-five, so I don't know, are we still waiting for him to...
He's walking up right now.
What's that?
He's walking up.
Okay, perfect. We'll just kind of...
Well, and if you want, and I can go over HB two if you want, so we can get that one out of the way. What's the use on that? So this one right here, this HB two, basically, it talks about diversity, equality, and inclusion. And so this is another form that, as a superintendent, I need to sign, just saying that no state funds will be used for bias, no state funds will be used for critical race theory, which is the stuff, basically, we're not doing anyway, right? It's, I will not use state money to hire someone based on race, gender, any of that stuff. So that's what that is. I believe you did receive it in your packet for you to kind of look over, so I didn't know if you had any specific questions.
Mr. Suss, and FYI, urge you on a motion to...
No, I want a motion because I need to sign it.
I have a straight question. I just wanted to make a comment, and this doesn't have any, it does have due, that there are school districts suing over this form right now, so...
Three.
See, yes, four, right.
Is it four now?
Yeah, I think it's four now.
There were, there were?
They're suing because this is such vague language, that their premises, that it's, that it might apply more broadly, but just a, just a comment before we vote on it.
Thank you.
I make a motion to allow the superintendent to sign that letter, the HB two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That will just come up when he put... It's already set for the right, isn't it?
I think I can even do B E, if you want. T E, and if we need to stop, we can.
Yeah.
So that is, I just, with the new website and with our web, with our old website, whatever, this is, just has to do with our committees. So if we look at our standing committees, we have building and maintenance, policy, transportation, negotiation, and then it says, any other committee is formed by the board. So we don't have joint loss, CIP, and wellness on there. I'm not asking to add them on there, but I'm just asking the board if they're okay with me adding them on to our committees on our website, because those are committees that we do. And then I would just send an email to everybody, just asking what committee you're on.
I mean, I don't see one, I don't see one.
Joint loss, CIP, and wellness.
CIP.
Any questions about that? I mean, the preview of the new website's amazing, so I'm excited to see it.
And if you want to, since he's in the bathroom, if you want to tell me what committee you're on, I can just write them down and do that, because building and maintenance, do we have?
Yes, so I'm on facilities.
So am I.
Yep.
See, there's, okay, so that must be building and maintenance.
Yeah.
And then policy is Heather and Mary. And then transportation. And then with me, negotiations, that's, we don't, we don't really have anybody around for negotiations. How about joint loss?
I was on joint loss.
CIP?
Me.
You are CIP?
I am CIP.
Okay, good.
All right, and then wellness?
I am wellness.
Nice to meet you.
All right, so I can...
I have a budget rep.
That's me.
I know, but it's not on the...
Budget?
Yes.
Is there any other one?
Is an alternative?
Yeah.
Curriculum's at school.
Oh, okay.
Who's the alternate on budget committee?
Pardon?
Who's the alternate?
I think it's me.
I was wondering whether to raise my hand, let nobody remember.
No, no, it's you.
Are we going to... Is there going to be...
I guess, I don't know why.
Yeah, I don't even have the meeting.
Do you guys want to do the grant review? The grant review?
What grant review?
On here?
We talked about it.
I'll just send her the list.
Okay.
That's easy thing, in case you missed anything.
Technology, is technology a committee?
Yeah, I got it.
Technology's a school committee, yeah.
Because that's the other one, I don't know.
And the other one was the Ryan's Road.
Yeah, that one we really...
It's just pending.
Didn't really...
Yeah.
On hold.
Yeah, it's on hold right now.
Oh, the professional development?
She has a list anyway, so...
Yeah, just send it to her.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Same time, okay.
All right, that's, that's...
We're trying to kill time.
All right, perfect to do that. And then if, if we want to do the, um...
She squeezed it all in, we're going to be done with the...
Sorry, what? If, if we're done with that one, you want to do the nominations?
Okay.
Uh, page forty-nine. This way, see, I'm trying to hit you all by eight.
Yeah, this is great, ma'am. All right, so we want to start with Hannah?
I make a, I make a motion to approve Hannah Windsor for the physical education position.
Second.
It says that she's going to need an SOE or emergency placement, and that she's going to bachelor's in business, which is great, but, so she just going to go back and take like a few gym classes or something?
Yes, so she has her emergency plan, her certification, that was approved by the state. Yep, so she does have that, and so now she'll just take, she has to just take the praxis. Once she takes the praxis, then she can get a statement of eligibility. But technically, she has a year.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And does she have a mentor that's working in front of that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Has mentor, thank you. All right.
Motion, sir. All right, can I get a motion? Do you get a motion for a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And then we've got resignation of...
Linkot.
Is that how you pronounce that?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
I think that's just a FYI.
There's a typo on the paper, it's easier to read on her resignation letter.
That's just FYI. It's not.
Nope.
I can't handle it. No, but it's still not a...
She's a...
We don't approve.
It's a resignation.
I know.
Are we supposed to say we accept with regret, is what he's asking?
Yeah, you can.
I'm not sure what he's asking.
That is what he's asking.
You said it was an FYI.
He's pointing, he's pointing. FYI.
Yep. And what else do we have?
Yeah, because then it's just my website after that, and policy, so...
Okay.
All right, so with that, we'll go, get back to presentations. We have Will Phillips here tonight from the New Hampshire School Board Association. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and let you take over from here.
Sure. Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. I always like to start off saying that, you know, believe it or not, this is actually the more enjoyable part of my job, actually meeting the people that are our members. Because usually, I just sit in my office and look at my computer and do policy work, so thank you again for inviting me. The second thing I'd like to ask is, what's your time stop? I did talk with the superintendent a little bit about that, but I need to be respectful of your time, and I can talk for a long time, but I also have a two-hour drive, so...
Thirty minutes.
Whoa, I don't talk that quick.
I did tell them ninety minutes was...
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I think that's pretty comfortable.
Okay.
And so the presentation that I'm going to do tonight is our, one of our core trainings, it's board roles and responsibilities. One of the things that's good about it is it touches on so many things that have to do with board work, so that, you know, if there are questions that are important to the board, you know, we'll have a little bit of a foundation and then wander into those questions. It's easier for me to do questions when they're on topic, but if you, you know, have something burning in your mind, you ask the question, I'm able to just say, we've got some slides coming up on that. And it just oftentimes is easier for me to, you know, lay a little foundation work and then get into more specifics that are related to a question. So with that aside, I know I'm sitting smack in front of the screen here, but I don't know that I can do much about that.
Do you want us to move it, we can find, push the screen?
Yeah, it might be easier if it was here, that everybody could see it without my...
Erin, can you handle that?
You, I think you all have it in front of you as well, but that way you'll at least see when I'm advancing the slides. All right, whoops, what did I do?
No, you're...
I'm glad it was closed.
Yes, is that good? Is that good?
That's great, okay. Thank you.
Before I get into that presentation, I do want to point out the two resource documents that you also have. The right-to-know law one, which we don't really talk too much about tonight, has some helpful documents that help you wander through not only non-public sessions, which tend to be tricky, and you have to make sure that you have the right paragraph, and you check all the boxes as you go to make sure that all the technical requirements are being followed, but anyway, that's there. But the other document has a couple of pieces inside that can be kind of helpful. So the, the first one is just the side-by-side that actually is one of the slides, and I'll talk a little bit about it, so I'm not going to do that now. But the second document, which is the, like, the third page of it, it basically is many, many of the statutes that apply to your budget setting, your annual meetings, your, the right-to-know laws, some safety, health, and emergency response. So a lot of different places, and you'll see, just looking at the RSA numbers, that, you know, they sprinkle the statutes that govern what you do in many, many different chapters. The third document, which is selected statutory duties and powers. Tonight, we're going to talk about sort of a groupings of basic roles, and what this document is are very specific statutes that give you a specific duty. So for instance, under one eighty-nine colon six, that's where you find your duty to transport students and find, you know, what that really means. So again, another, just another thing that we're not going to cover tonight, but if you're ever interested in many of the little duties that you have, they're buried in there. And then, oh, I thought I had one more, I'm pretty sure I do. Where is this asked? Oh, maybe I, maybe I looked it up. Okay, I guess it's not in there. Let's see, selected superintendent, holding... Okay, well, I have one more that I need to add to that, because I think it's very useful. But anyway, just, just some resources that can be helpful during your service as a board member. Now, I'm pretty sure that this board does not have as many people as are in the room. So who are we talking to, board members and your administrative staff?
Yes.
Okay. Great, okay, with that, we'll get a start on here. Let's get through the index page. We start this basic... Uh, we start this basic, um, training, they, you know, call it that, with three core principles. First one, uh, you can find this in RSA one eighty-nine, one A, one. And this reads, um, the, the core part, it shall be the duty of the school board to provide a district expense elementary and secondary education to all pupils who reside in the district. Seems like a pretty straightforward statement, but, um, you know, if you didn't have that duty, you also wouldn't need to have a school board. But, when you kind of break down that, that clause, or that, um, that segment, it can mean different things to different people, um, you know, where the priorities are, because you've got district expense in there, you've got elementary and secondary education, and what that means, um, can mean different things to different people. You obviously have different constituencies within your town, within your school group, and you basically will have different opinions among the school board. And so, you know, sometimes you're gonna get to these places where even as, just personally, you might have, geez, do I vote this way, or do I vote this way? It's helpful when you're at that point, you know, when it's a close call for you, just to look back at what is, what is it you're actually supposed to be doing here? And it's to be providing education to your students. So, maybe that will tip the scales a little bit, maybe not, but again, that's your, the purpose of you being here. Second core principle is the collective authority of a school board. One thing that comes as a great surprise often to newly elected school board members, even, even, uh, some experienced members, but it's also something that the public doesn't always understand, and, and actually more often than not, doesn't understand, that as a school board member, you don't have any individual authority. The only authority you have as an elected school board member is to actually sit at a school board meeting, deliberate with the school board, and vote on things that come before the school board. Once the meeting's over, you don't have independent authority, there, you can't solve a problem, you can't direct employees to do something. It, it all is based on the collective will of your, uh, school board, so obviously you need a quorum, and it's a majority of a quorum that dictates what the board's positions are going to be. There are, you know, a couple of, uh, obvious exceptions, one is that, uh, the board can delegate authority to an individual member. So, uh, the, the clearest example of that is when you elect a chair. Um, there's no statute that says school boards have to have chairs, but, um, it'd be really hard to function without one, especially just having a meeting. Um, and, you know, how do, how do you move a meeting along if everybody's got the same, same, uh, position at the table? So you elect a board, uh, chair to, uh, preside over your meetings, to sign documents in between, uh, meetings that, you know, documents that the board has either approved specifically, or approved by implication, or, um, you know, blanket authority. Sometimes the school board chair acts as a spokesperson. Uh, and then also the school board chair is the one that, with the superintendent, establishes what the agenda is going to be for a meeting. Uh, so those are all things that you, as a board, have voted to, um, authorize the school board chair to do, uh, that the individual members, uh, wouldn't have. And I think, and then a couple of, a couple of other examples of where, um, some authority might be outside of the meeting is, um, there's a couple of committees that actually have statutory authority to do things, actually, one's not a committee, so I'm not sure how you do your manifest, we'll get to that later, um, but there's, for instance, a statute that authorizes two board members to be appointed as the persons to, um, check the manifest and sign off on the manifest every, every, um, every week, so you don't need a, a majority, you just need two who are authorized by the board to do that, and the other main example of that is, um, that, you know, some, especially larger districts, might have student conduct committees, because they do have, you know, multiple expulsions per year, uh, and, and there's a statute that authorizes, um, a subcommittee of three school board members to be, uh, sit in place of the entire board. But in all of your other committee work, um, the only decisions they're making are, you know, which things to bring to the board to recommend. You know, they don't have final decision-making, uh, on practically anything. Okay, so, yes?
What if, let's say, if I was unhappy about, um, a decision? Can I, like, as a board member, can I, um, say something about it? Or no?
Say something to whom, about what?
Um, let's say, just in, in general, but, okay, let's say, could I, um, read a statement at a school board meeting?
Um, so there's.
An extent.
So, so the answer is, legally, in most instances, the answer is yes. It's often not a great way to build, um, collaboration among the school board, and if it's not done correctly, it can actually work against your effectiveness as a school board member. So what I typically would say, okay, well, we'll start with, individual board members do not lose their rights of free expression.
Right.
There are three, and sometimes I forget when I'm just rolling it off the top, and like, so I'm gonna get two, I know that, maybe the third will come to me by the time I get to it, but. So the first one is, uh, if you're on a collective bargaining team, and you're on the team, so not the other members, you're on the team, and you reach a, a tentative agreement, you have the duty to advocate that, for the ratification of that.
Yep.
Contract by the board, and you also have to publicly advocate for it and vote for it. You can't change your mind and say, well, I only did that because I was getting sick of meeting, you know, that, that would be bad faith bargaining. So that's one, another one is, if you have a non-public session, um, what the, the, you know, assuming, well, let's, let's just say that you're in the non-public session, the board has by statute, uh, voted to have that conversation out of the public hearing, and the only thing that comes out of that is your minutes, which may be sealed, uh, and whatever directives, you know, result from that, in order to bring the action effective. You, you know, you don't get to wander out there and talk to your spouse about, you know, what was said in there, you don't get to go on Facebook and say what was in there, and then, you know, maybe sooner or later, the third one will come to me. Uh, oh, I know, the, it, it's sort of easy, is the, um, the, um, it, it's related to that, so confidential information that you obtain by virtue of your official position. So sometimes you're gonna see documents that are, you know, marked as exempt, for some reason, you're, you know, you might see attorney, uh, you know, attorney communications, which are privileged communications. So confidential information that you obtain by virtue of your, um, position, uh, also things you can't talk about. So all that said, um, the, the other, you know, the other thing about disagreeing with a board decision is, it's really important how it's done. Again, we don't encourage it, uh, we think that, you know, board effectiveness is stronger, when a board makes a decision, you move on to the next thing, and, and, you know, arguing about what you already did does not help you move forward.
Okay.
If it's a really, really big, important thing that you just, you know, morally just can't live with, you know, maybe.
But, okay, so, on that, like, during the discussion, when we're making, um, there's a motion, second for discussion, and can you voice, like, your re, say, if you vote, want to vote against something? Can you tell? Like, speak your mind and say, this is the reason why, like, I can do that, right?
Uh, that is typically how it's done, yes.
Okay, I just, okay.
So, so, you know, um, you know, one of the things that's, that's odd about a small board, you know, in a very formal setting, like, picture your annual meeting, at your annual meeting, there's a warrant article, and the only thing you can talk about is the warrant article, but that effectively is a motion that's on the floor that you're talking about, you can amend how that's worded, but, but before the conversation even starts, that's the motion. So, um, in larger groups, there's typically a motion, or a, you know, a formal document, or something that's on the table, so you're already talking about that before you're moving for a vote. In smaller boards, and especially because of all the little decisions you end up having to make, there are frequently times you're having a conversation, and so that's where you're expressing it, then there's a motion, then there's a second, you've already had the deliberation, uh, and it's really up to the chair to, to either say, any further discussion. That said, you know, if you've already said it, you've already said it.
Okay.
No need to, you know, say the same thing four times. So, okay, so third core principle, governance, not management. Really understanding what the difference is, and I know that over the past several months, uh, you know, that line got really blurred, because, you know, you basically had to step in and manage the school district, because you didn't have, um, effective management, so maybe not the last month, but prior to that, it was a, you know, I spent, I spent some time on the phone with, um, some of your members, where you were really in a tough place, and here you are, you got through it. Uh, but typically, uh, you know, there is a line, there's governance, not management, and the board's job is not to run the schools, that's the administration's job. Your job is to see that the schools are run well, um, so you're, you're here to, yes?
And when we don't have a superintendent, what is the chain of command from that?
Good, good question. The next person down on the, uh, the, um, the, the list there, um, I mean, under state law, you are required to have somebody who's certified to be a superintendent.
Right.
Generally speaking, I mean, because it happens, I mean, sometimes people die, some people just, uh, you know.
Wow.
Sorry about that, Donna.
Or win powerball.
Right, 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 yeah, or win powerball, or, uh, we had, you know, two situations this year where it was like, you know, you can take this job, and out the door they went. And, you, you know, there is no pecking order unless you have an assistant superintendent, but, you have a BA, usually, I think you had a, that was your biggest problem, is you didn't have somebody who knew who you were supposed to call, and which levers you were supposed to pull. But, you know, we try to, you, you can give us calls, sometimes we can find somebody really quickly, some, but sometimes we can't, um, and, uh, I, I, I think you did as best you could, and, and, uh, you know, probably laid out a good roadmap for other small districts that are stuck in, in the same place. So unfortunately, it, you know, typically it's your top administrators, and one goes, the next one up, at least, uh, you know, keeps the lights on until, until another person come along. I hope that, you know, at least this year, the DOE was helpful, um, in trying to work through that, sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. You know, sometimes they really want to see all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted before they let you do anything, but other times they're a little easier to work with, so I hope that that was a helpful process. Uh, so anyway, generally speaking, the idea is you're setting policies, vision and goals of the district, uh, and you fill, fill them through oversight of the administration. I mean, one of the, you know, one of the things when you think about that, especially in going back to the second slide, about, you know, how is it that boards operate? They operate by collective authority. Managing a district requires somebody making decisions all the time, uh, and they're making decisions between the meetings based on directions that you, you've provided, either by static policies, or resolutions, or motions, um, and, and, um, also through, um, you know, administrative, uh, regulations that they've established, also statutes and, and, um, state or federal regulations. So, it, you know, it's, it's, unless the school board is meeting, you know, every single day, uh, which of course requires a twenty-four-hour notice before you can meet, you know, it's, it, you, you, it's, you're just not equipped to do it. So, primarily, a school board operates in legislative capacity. You're making policy decisions, whether they are static, you know, coded policies that go in your manual, manual, or simply just policy decisions about, you know, that, you know, telling the superintendent, um, you know, having a vote, yes, we want you to do this thing. It doesn't require a policy, but it is a policy decision, because you are directing how the resources of the district are going to be, um, utilized. Superintendent, easily, implements the policies, visions, and goals of the board, manages all of the operations of the district and its schools, and then has a circular, uh, sort of relationship, in that it's the superintendent's legal obligation to advise the board regarding legal obligations, um, trying to keep the, uh, district and the board in, in legal compliance, uh, and then providing the board with practical considerations regarding policy, budget, et cetera. Yes?
I just have a question to clarify, um, where the board's policies, vision, and goals of the district, and helps fulfill them through the oversight of the administration, so the board, I mean, I feel like the administration can be so broad, but that would be, like, the superintendent, unless the superintendent's not in place, correct? Like, we don't oversee the president.
No, 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 it, so you're, you're overseeing the superintendent, and, um, I think it's two slides from now, no, three slides from now, I'll, I'll get into that, you know, how, how you do that.
Perfect.
And then there's some other pieces throughout some of the other slides that actually, you know, look at, you know, how, how, uh, a board can provide oversight, uh, yes?
Well, I think, I think on the slide two, when it says administration, it's referring to me, not my team.
Correct.
So when you see it on there, it says administration, it doesn't mean my building principals, it just means me.
And, and usually, usually I do say superintendent, um, but there are times, uh, when, you know, that's too specific. So, uh, I'm not gonna spend too much time on this one, there, basically what it says is, there are statutes and regulations that, number one, require you to have somebody who is, uh, a certified person to provide superintendent services, and then, um, you know, it, it really gets into what it means for superintendent services. So within that resource packet, you have one ninety-four C four, which has a, uh, you know, a list of all of the buckets of duties that, um, statutes assign to superintendent, and it includes, you know, management of the finances, well, if you have a BA, obviously it's not the, um, you know, it's not the superintendent sitting, sitting there entering the data into the payroll system, that's the people who are subordinate to the superintendent, so the superintendent, you know, you used to hear and actually still do. The board has one employee, that's the superintendent, and the superintendent supervises all of the folks underneath. And, and, you know, when things go wrong down here, you know, to some extent, it's, it's the superintendent's, uh, uh, problem up here. You know, you can't be at all, you know, in all places at all times, but that's part of being, uh, the leader of the district. So, in, in ED, so, I assume everyone knows, but I'll, I'll just say it, so RSA is revised statutes annotated, those are our, the state statutes passed by the legislature, signed into law by the governor. Uh, when you see ED, that's just referring to a, a Department of Education regulation. Sometimes you'll see other, um, letters before a series of numbers, so you might see LAB for labor, SAF for safety, the, uh, ENV for department, uh, environment, so, uh, but the ones that you're most frequently going to see are ED, but three oh two oh one, which is duties of the superintendent, um, described, you know, first assigns all of the administrative and leadership districts of the, services of the district to the superintendent, but then it says, as those services are further defined and directed by the governing body. So that's where you are, um, you know, you're directing the work of the superintendent by policy, or by, um, you know, specific directives at, at meetings. Uh, and then, of course, the duties enumerated in statutes and rules. Okay, so this is, this is the next place, so, you saw in the, in that red language, uh, job of the board is to see that the district is run well, well, hiring your superintendent and evaluating the superintendent are a key, if not most important, aspect of how you manage that. So, it, it, well, I'm just gonna zip through those parts. So under one statute, the school board is the, the entity that's responsible for hiring a superintendent. There is no prescribed process for doing that. It's, it's really superintendent position opens up, school board has to decide how it's going to fill that position. Yes?
On that, um, is it beneficial to have some sort of plan in place to hire a superintendent?
I was about, I was about to get to this, okay, so, so remember I just said, sometimes superintendents die, and then sometimes superintendents have.
She's gonna kill me off, huh?
Okay, sometimes superintendents win the lottery. They win bag of bucks, and they just come in and say, sorry, guys, they got better things to do today. to do today. But it happens immediately, and other times superintendent's been there for 20 years and they're retiring, and they give you two years' notice. So how that hiring process works is going to be very different. How you hired, you know, an interim, did you, you ended up having an interim, like, you know, you know, how, what point of, you know, at what point did you get notice that you needed to have someone come and sit in the seat? And, and I've seen very elaborate processes because they gave you two, you know, the superintendent gave you two years' notice, so you sat there and we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have a nationwide search, and we're gonna have, you know, a community input, and we're gonna have to do this, that, and the other thing. Or the superintendent passes away right before the budget season, and, you know, you just find somebody really quickly, and then sometimes, guess what, you really love that person and they stay. Or it didn't work out and you're, you know, you're really just using that, that little break in time so that you can make a plan to do a search. So oftentimes, you know, those interim positions are, are retired superintendents who, yeah, okay, I'll come help right here, I'm getting bored, my golf game's knocked up better. But, but, so there are some bigger districts especially that have a policy, we even have a sample, I think, for succession planning. One complex SAU has, I think, five school districts, and they, they almost always have elevated one of their, you know, they have two assistant superintendents, and they almost always have elevated one of those assistant superintendents. You know, one of the luxuries of having multiple people with the adequate certification for that. So the other thing that you're required to do, there's a, a Department of Education rule that requires the school board to annually evaluate the superintendent, but again, it doesn't tell you what that means. And so, you know, some districts, they've had the same superintendent for a while, they're happy with the superintendent, it's just a pain to go through the process every year, so they just haven't done one in eight years, but then when you say, you know, you're supposed to do this every year, the answer is, we evaluate the superintendent every time we interact with him or her. We evaluate the superintendent every time there's a budget process, every time there's a, you know, that we get to the end of the year and guess what, everything went well, we've evaluated. So there is no process, we don't think that's the best idea, but one of, we, we do have multiple sample processes for evaluation. What we would say is that there's not, there's not one evaluation that works in all circumstances. And it's not just because of the district itself, you know, so you have, you know, Wakefield, a single district SAU, you've got SAUs that have as many as eight different school districts within there, so eight different school boards get to weigh in on the evaluation. You've got, you know, districts that have 15 school board members, one with 13 school board members, a couple with 11, you know, single, single district SAUs. And so, you know, how that system works is, is going to differ depending on, you know, that, you know, the particular district, the particular school board. But it also, you know, do you have a, a brand new superintendent who's never been somewhere else, hasn't worked in your district? That, that evaluation, the process and the model is going to, or the tool, is going to look very different than, you know, a superintendent who, you know, even if it's the first year coming into your district, has five years somewhere else. But then each year that that person is with you, you're going to want to change what it looks like for the next year, you know, because you're going to identify, you know, strengths and weaknesses, you're gonna spend a little less time on the strengths, a little more time on the weaknesses, but most importantly is, you know, what is it you're evaluating? And so what we strongly suggest is a, an evaluation process where the board sets district goals. The board then establishes its own goals for how to move those district goals forward, and then aligns with the superintendent to, I mean, how the superintendent can support the goals of the board and the district. So you've identified what it is that's important to you as a board to see in the next year, and then you, over the course of that year, whether you do it by a formal schedule, you know, once every two months, you just take a period in, in non-public session to look at the goals and see, you know, see what, you know, see where things are going. Some districts actually create like a little matrix and have all these wonderful things over the course of the year, and they go back and they look, and sometimes you're adjusting your goals. Some goals get checked off a lot earlier than you thought they were, some goals are proving to be more elusive, and, you know, probably gonna take two or three years, not one year. You know, I had one school board when I was in private practice, they just set crazy goals, just, we're gonna improve our reading scores by five points this year. That's not, that's not gonna happen, that's impossible. And, you know, why, why they did that, I don't know, but anyway, so, yes?
Can, can a school board create their own evaluation tailored to, to this, this particular school?
Sure. No, it, it, like I said, there is no prescribed tool.
Because the things that we've used in the past, we can't even answer the questions.
So we, I, I, you know, I don't know if you looked at ours, or, but we have, I, I have a packet that, that I will send to a board, it has like four or five different tools, so, and, and again, they're just ideas, they're not, you know, a, a board looks at them and says, yeah, we don't need to spend time on that, or that, or that, but these are important to us, and by the way, we think this one's important, so we're gonna put that one in there as well. In our sample manual, we have CBI, and then there's some attachments to that, I think there's two sample, they're really the straightforward, you know, scoring different things.
Question, sure.
I see. But I also have some more in a packet that I can send, if, you know, somebody sends me an email, I'll, I'll do that.
I think, well, for me, the difficulty in the past when we've done is that we, the superintendent, it's almost in two directions, it's, we're asked to evaluate, you know, the overall impact and job dues of, in school, but also with the school board. The school board, that's, that's easy. The school's very difficult because we aren't necessarily involved with that day-to-day, but the direct impact to the culture, you know, that's the difficulty, I think, with evaluations we've seen in the past.
Yeah.
There's a lot of those questions that are just, unless we're sitting at-
Didn't apply to us as board members, so.
Yeah, we're sitting at, unless we're here every day, we have no idea.
How's a superintendent react with the, with the teachers in school?
Yeah.
We don't know.
Yeah, and there's not, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of ability to do that. You're, really where you get those things is from, it's, it's an aggregation. So it's, it's, you know, you're obviously every year going to get complaints from people. Are they the same complaints? Are they, you know, did you get 12 complaints from 12 different people that all sort of suggest the same thing? That's, that's an area that needs to be improved. If it happens three years in a row, that's a, you know, that, that's a, you know, that's a warning sign. You know, there, there are mechanisms for, you know, maybe getting more information, however, you really gotta be, take care in doing that because, so let's say you do a survey. So number one, you don't want to ask open questions. But the other part of a survey is people who are happy or don't really have any concerns or anything, they're the least likely to return a survey. The people who are most likely to return the survey are the ones whose, you know, kid didn't make the basketball team, or the, we've got-
We've heard that, we went through that.
And more, what happens is that we, like, we hear, like, you know, people reach out to, to one person.
Yep.
It never collectively makes it back to the entire board for an effective discussion, I guess.
Yep.
And so it's really hard to quantify, you know, that data so that we can effectively manage the evaluation without it being very subjective and, you know, that's, that's the difficulty. We went through it once a couple of years ago with our former superintendent, and that was a, that was a very difficult process because it was just, I felt very uncomfortable because I've gone through these evaluations in my professional world, and I'm looking at this going, how do I do this? I can't, if the superintendent comes back to me and says, why, there's no real effective answer as to why it was scored a certain way, you know, and that's, to me, that's challenging, and I think with where we're at right now, I really want to have something established. I think we all want to have something that really works.
So, so, you know, I'm happy to, I'll send a packet, and, and again, the packet has several different things in it. So it's not a, it's not a, here's your, you know, here's the, the golden tool here. There, if, if you're going to engage in something that is broader, number one, don't do it too often, but number two, so for instance, if you're doing a survey, you have to be very careful, like I said, and one thing you don't want to do is open any questions because those are all, you know, subject to right to know law, and now somebody's gonna have to, you know, you're gonna have to pay somebody to go through and decide, you know, what to do with them. Can't be the superintendent because, you know, so, so who's gonna be doing that? Is it going to be a superintendent subordinate? Is it going to be, you know, a designated person from the school board? And then, you know, and, and school board members aren't typically involved with how you respond to a right-to-know-law request. So most, more frequently, what happens, you know, when districts have done this, they work with a consultant who has at least some understanding as to, you know, what is the best way if you're going to, you know, survey staff members. Staff members, it's a little easier to deal with. If you're surveying, you know, the general community, it's a little trickier. There are, there are ways to do it. Certainly, the first year, we'd suggest you work with somebody to do that because then, you know, every time we've heard somebody tried to do it on their own, you know, bad things happened. And then just keeping in mind that, you know, when you get a 20% return from the parents, you know, 80% of those are just people who have grudged about something, something went wrong, they, you know, they didn't like the way something works. So you take it, I don't want to say with a grain of salt because it still can be informative, but you do, you need to be careful about it. And really, the school board, you know, it's seldom that you're going to hear a widespread problem just blow up. You know, if it was widespread, you're going to hear it. And, and that's, you know, that's, it, it is appropriate, you know, if, if there's enough noise in the community, it is not inappropriate to have a conversation with a superintendent non-public about, you know, hey, what's going on with this thing? You know, you've gotta be careful about individual, you know, if you're talking about individuals, that's a whole different story, but if you're talking about a, a systemic problem, then, you know, that, that's not inappropriate.
I just have a question, like, for, for a school, I think we was talking about when staff reaches out to one of us, our policy, I guess, has been they have to come to the school board meeting and reiterate it to the whole board.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll, we'll get into-
Again, that later.
Yeah, we'll get, get into, because there, there, that takes a whole lot of different forms, many different forms, and it, and it does kind of depend on what the issue is. So anyway, that's, you know, our suggestion is work, you know, on what it is you're going to be looking for is, you know, how do you tie the superintendent's performance into where you want the district to be going? And just be realistic about, you know, where you want the district to be going. And, you know, you've had a pretty volatile year this year, but even the last few years, there hasn't been a lot of stability in the, in the central office, so it might take some time to settle things down a little bit.
Sorry.
Okay, so this next slide, this is in the resource package. All this is, is if you look at the left-hand side of that page, it's just the different areas of, you know, how does a district run? So you got policy and decision-making board meetings, budget and fiscal matters, et cetera. And, and what this does is sort of just describe generally what the different domains are. So, you know, the governance domain in that middle column, and then the management domain in the right-hand column. Now, one thing I would say, remember that little piece in the thing about the superintendent's duties where it said, you know, as directed by the, the school board? The school board can move the line in most of these a little bit to the left, a little bit to the right, so if you're having problems with, you know, budget and fiscal matters, you might tweak your fiscal policies, and you might, you know, request additional reports, you know, better data, just so that you can keep an eye on things a little more closely. But you do that through directives to the, the superintendent, and there's a couple of examples that we'll get to when we talk about budgets. But, but, you know, when you look at the, especially the Department of Education rules on substantive duties of, of school boards, you'll see that most of these are, most if not all, are adopt policies that regulate employees, adopt policies that regulate students, adopt a budget, you know, but they're all high-level things. Nowhere are you going to find, you know, direct the custodian to do this, that, or the other thing, that falls within the, the management side of things. But, you know, just so example, policy and decision-making, the board develops them and adopts them. Superintendent implements them, monitors legal requirements, advises the board about, you know, policy needs and changes. You might have a policy that was a great idea, but as, as written, it needs to be tweaked, whether I wrote it, or you wrote it, or you borrowed it from another district. You know, on paper, it looked good, but it just needs to be tweaked. And all the way through that, I'm not gonna go through each of those, I just offer that as an example, and again, it's in that resource package as well, because I know in your little, in the three slide per page, it's probably hard to read unless you have a magnifying glass, and I've gotten old enough, there's a magnifying glass in every single room in my house now. School board legislative functions, so this is where the almost, you know, probably 90% of your work comes in, assuming that, you know, you actually have a central office. So what are policies, so, and why policies? They, they express your guidelines, they express your philosophical statements, and, and those things where the board is saying, here's where we want the district to go and how we want it to get there. They advise students, families, staff, and the larger community, so those folks who don't have kids in the schools and aren't employed by the schools, of the requirements, the expectations, the opportunities, procedure, et cetera, which govern your school district. And then related to that, they create the framework within which the superintendent manages the district and the staff discharge their assigned duties. So I had a question, I had a training last night, also out on this part of the state, I live in Keene, but, so, so I had a question about, you know, a policy last year, as you know, you know, we get very politically charged policies. I try to just give you, here's what we're told to do, and, you know, maybe gives you some things to try to manage that. In some places, you know, you've got two different legal authorities that tell you to go that way, and, and I try to point that out to you, and that's, you know, the school board is the one that has to decide, do we go this way or this way? Do we want to get sued by those people or these people? That's up to you. I, you know, I can't tell you what's best for your particular district because another district, you know, next town over, might have a very different, number one, community base that feels differently about it, but also might have circumstances within their district, might have student population that makes one avenue different than the other. But anyway, I had, you know, a question from board last night, why do we have to put that language into a policy if the statute already says it? Well, how does your, how does your staff know that they're supposed to do this thing if you don't tell them? Because how do they know what the legislature did? They know it because we're putting it into a policy and you're passing the policy, so now everybody in the community that's actually paying attention is, is at least getting news about this, and the superintendent has as a responsibility, the duty of making sure that the people who are impacted by a policy actually see that policy. So it's, it's a way of making sure that the folks know what it is they're supposed to do. do. If the, if you don't put that thing in the policy, just because you disagree with it, and, and say, well, I don't have to, I don't have to say those words, because it's already in the statute, you haven't told the person who's, you know, needs to carry that out, that they need to do that thing. So when they don't do that thing, it's, it's you as a board, it's you as a district that, that are liable for that, not, you know, also the individual employee probably, but it's a much larger problem. So that's a, you know, good reason to have policies.
Do you normally have to create the policy? Is it just the board? 'Cause we have staff on ours, too.
No, that, and, and that makes sense, because it, you know, some things, you know, Will Phillips, sitting in his office in Concord, doesn't always know exactly the best way to say something in a particular school district. You know, we, believe it or not, we're very small staff, and, you know, when I write a policy, I'm writing a policy for Manchester, Wakefield, Goshen, which has no schools, Hill, which has like, you know, fifty students, so, you know, it, it, you know, here's a starting point, and I'm gonna get to that in a second, so let me jump to the next slide, but, so big P, little p. When you hear the word policy, it doesn't just mean the coded, you know, the thing with the alphabet soup that, you know, NHSBA points out, puts out. It's all those little decisions where you are directing either the, you know, superintendent to do something, you're making decisions about, do we approve this field trip? Do we, do we approve this student activity group, add this sport, take away this sport? You know, add a foreign language in the middle school? All those are policy decisions. You don't see them in a policy, but they are policy decisions. Legislative decisions, you're directing how the, the, you know, how things are gonna operate within your school, how the resource is gonna be used. So just a little bit about the NHSBA policy system. I'm not gonna get into the alphabet soup, but we have, there's twelve subject areas. Some of them, only have a couple of things in them, some, you know, you might not have any of them, but, and so there's twelve, you know, there's one for students, one for staff, one for community, one for fiscal matters, et cetera. But then we also have three classifications. We've got required, recommended, and optional. The required policies, really what they reflect mostly is, there is a statute or regulation that says the board shall adopt a policy, or the district shall have a policy. And that's all the required means. Some of those requirements are very specific. You know, generally, the federal ones are very content-specific, some of the state ones are very specific, but many of the state ones are general, and they leave it to the school board to kind of fill in the blanks. So for instance, under both the old Department of Education rule, three oh six rules and the new ones, there was a, the board has to have a policy on homework. The old one said, and the homework policy shall describe how it relates to the grading system. And the new one says, the homework policy shall describe how homework is accessed and Doesn't even say what that means, but, but anyway, so we did, I think we did, did we update that one? I don't know. It might have been one of the ones we released in the spring. We're still trying to work through the three oh six rules, but, but the homework policy, whether, whatever is accessed and assessed means, if you've got a K through twelve district, your policy might say, we're not gonna have homework for K through three, we just don't think that's a great idea. For, you know, for four through six, you know, we're gonna have it, but, but it can't constitute more than, you know, five percent of a student's grade. And then for high school, it's like, hey, whatever you teachers wanna do, go for it. You know, that's what your board policy can say. There's a, there's a district in the state, K through twelve, no homework. Where the homework is not allowed, you can assign it voluntarily, but it can't count toward your grade. So that's, that's something wholly within the, the school board's function. But the, the takeaway there is, the requirement is, they have a policy. That's all the requirement is, well, plus you're gonna describe how it's accessed and assessed. I think the way we did it, we, we interpreted that to mean, you know, there are some districts where the parent portal has the assignments on it, you know, teachers are required to put the, the homework assignment on the portal, so that, you know, it's not only the kid that knows about it, it's the family that knows about it. And then the assessment, you know, not only how it's graded, but, you know, how that connects to your, your grade. Recommended policies tend, like many of the required policies, reflect legal mandates or prohibitions, so there are many, many statutes that say, do this, don't do that, but there's no language in there that says, and the board must have a policy about that. But how do the people in your building know what they're supposed to do or not do? You, you know, you get the NHSBA update, but they don't. Students don't know, the parents don't know, the teachers don't know. So that, you know, the, the purpose of, of the recommended policies, most of them reflect legal mandates or prohibitions, and it's basically trying to communicate to the, you know, the people who need to know about it, you know, what those are. And then some of the other recommended policies are just operational best practices. You know, high schools have students who drive, so you're gonna have a parking policy. There's a, you know, we have a KEB, public complaints about individuals, there's no requirement that you have that kind of policy, but it's a good play, it's a good thing to have, because it helps people understand how to resolve complaints they might have in certain instances. And then finally, the optional, optional policies are really just operational, or, you know, I get three or four requests for a policy on a specific topic, and it just makes sense to, you know, give school boards, you know, other school boards, the, the option of adopting that policy. You know, I, I got many, many about artificial intelligence over the past two years, but it was really one of those, it's kind of early for a school board to say, you know, initially, the request were, do you have a policy prohibiting artificial intelligence? It's like, yeah, it's right up there with the one that prohibits use of automobiles and calculators. You know, it's, it's here, it, you know, but how do you put it into a policy, and how do you use it within the, the setting? So we finally did come out with one. It's, you know, maybe it's good, maybe it's not. But anyway, so, did I answer your question? Your question was staff members. Staff members do need to be involved, because they're the ones who have to implement it.
Right, I know I have to share with them. I just know that, I thought it was interesting, that Wolfboro just has only their board do it, and they set up a couple days, and they just go through the whole alphabet of them every year, and go through the whole policy.
Well, that, that probably is review.
Yeah.
More review than, than the adoption part. But, you know, I, I, you know, I would hope that when they are, you know, depending on what the policy is, there are some that are, you, you really can't not listen to the people who are implementing it, because, you know, sometimes what Will Phillips thinks of is not really practical when you implement it, nor, you know, if the school board thinks of, hey, let's do this thing, and it was a great idea, maybe it just needs to be tweaked, but maybe the unintended consequences, just, you know, you, you didn't foresee them, and they're not worth, so you pull them out. But yeah, so, you know, ideally, you have, you know, a couple of board members, you have senior administrative person, and then, you know, some boards have somebody from the community, or, or, you know, a parent in there. But, you know, if you're talking about an IT policy, then you should be bringing in your IT people to, to, to give you suggestions as to what works, what doesn't work, what something's gonna cost, so things like that. Okay, and then the last piece of that, that slide, probably the most important takeaway relative to our policies, is that our sample policies are just that. They're samples, they used to, you know, people used to call them model policies. I like to think that they are models, but really, they're samples. They're for you to, they're, they're hopefully saving you time and effort, they're, they're giving you enough information to know what this, you know, what you're required to do, but because, you know, a lot of times, you know, you'll have this two sentences in a statute, and, and so, accessed and assessed, what does that mean? So, you know, I gave you an example, and, and maybe you think it means something different, and that's okay, but, but, you know, you could sit there and debate that, you know, at a policy committee meeting for, you know, two meetings and not come to a conclusion. Whereas at least if I give you the sample, you'll say, well, you know, maybe tweak that a little bit. But there, so they're samples. Important thing to take away, though, is that for anything that is, you know, the required policies and the recommended policies, because they, more even than the optional policies, because they do reflect legal mandates or prohibitions, if you're going to change them, you know, I suggest either somebody read all the legal references that are included in there, or call me, and I'll say, no, no, you really, you don't wanna take that out, because that's actually what the legislature is telling you, you need to do, or, you know, consult with your private counsel. And, and, you know, the, your superintendent, you know, spends more time in meetings than, than, you know, anybody should have to, but some of those meetings are where they're getting, you know, all the information about new legislation, how it's being implemented, how it's working in other districts. So that's, you know, that's why one of their requirements is to be the, the party responsible for providing new information about legal compliance. Okay, so, next, next area of responsibility, which is really just a subpart of the last one, is set and establish budget and provide budget oversight. Budget is a fiscal expression of your policy. That, I mean, it is a policy. So, do you have a official budget committee? Okay, so you still are required, whether, whether you have one or you don't, you're still required to propose a budget or develop a budget, and, you know, hopefully, you and your budget committee can, you know, at least get really close, but even when you can't, it's the voters that are approving the final budget. And if your number is X, and the budget committees is X minus two percent, you as a board should be very well-prepared to advocate for why you think X is the number that you need in order to best serve the students of your district. And I think I, I don't need to go further than that, but, but how, so why is budget policy? Are you buying new instruments for the band? Are you not buying instruments? Are you repairing the roof this year or next year? You know, how many snowstorms do you think you need to prepare for? You know, you're deciding where, you know, some of this money goes. Obviously, much of the money that you have to put in your budget is, is regulated by contracts or, or legal obligations, but other places, you do have some flexibility. And then once the budget does pass, you still have policymaking. So what the, what the voters approve is a number, and that number is the amount of money that the school district is going to run on that year. You have, I don't know, fifteen lines in your DRA form, and each of those lines is supposedly, you're, you're fixed to that amount, but you have the ability to transfer money from one line to the next line. So if, if somebody at the annual meeting moves to, you know, raise the budget by a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, have a, you know, a full-time Spanish teacher, the board thinks, well, we tried that before, but only three kids signed up every year, so we're gonna not spend that hundred thousand, and, oh, guess what? The boiler just went, we're actually gonna take that hundred thousand, we're gonna put it toward fixing the boiler. Those are policy decisions that are given to the board to, to decide. The bottom piece there, this is a place where, just an example of, remember that, that three column thing, where I said you can move, you know, boards by policy can move the lines, shift the lines one way or the other? So how do you provide oversight? One is do a manifest review. How do you do your manifest here? Are they done by the entire board, or do you? Okay, so, three different ways to do a manifest. One is by the entire board at board meetings. One is the statute, one ninety-seven, twenty-three A, authorizes the board to appoint two members or more to be the manifest review people, doesn't even have to happen at, at a meeting. So there are some SAUs, you walk in, at one of my clients, when I was in private practice, there was a multi-district SAU, and they had just this long table with a big binder for each of the districts on the table, and at any given time that I was in there, you might, you know, a board member would wander in, sit there for twenty minutes, and, and then sign it, and then leave, and maybe twenty minutes later, another board member would come into another one. So that's the second way you can do it. And then the third way is you don't even have to have manifest review, you just have to make sure at the end of the year that the, the bottom-line number matches, you know, matches the, the other part. No, actually, that's incorrect, sorry about that. You do have to have some mechanism for approving expenditures, but it can be done, so for instance, your payroll, your, you know, somebody doesn't have to approve each check before the, you know, somebody gets their direct deposit, you've done it by approving the collective bargaining agreement, the voters have approved the collective bargaining agreement, and then you've got the individual contracts that have all been signed, that are consistent with the collective bargaining agreement. So those are pre-approved, so to say, but you're still checking to make sure that, you know, the money that is for salaries, it matches what the money is supposed to be. The line item transfers is another place where, you know, the board can shift how, you know, how a line item transfer works. So a line item transfer, and this is where, you know, I'm sorry, I jumbled the two together. So on that fifteen-line DRA form, you've got a, a sum that, that you're supposed to use toward those pieces, that's what the voters approve. However, during the course of the year, the board may either by necessity, or simply by discretion, decide that they wanna move money from one place to the other place. And it's called the line item transfer, and that's the one where, you know, there are three different sort of approaches. One is, before money can be spent on a different line, the board has to approve it. Second one is, you set a threshold that allows the administration to make that expenditure upon the approval of the superintendent, provided that the superintendent come to the next board meeting and say, here's what I did. And, and, you know, the, you know, the reason for that is, number one, so that the board, whatever needs to happen, happens, it's reported to the board as soon as possible, so that the board can say, well, you know what, we understand that you needed to take the money from somewhere, but we want it to come from here, not from here. And, and so we'll just rejigger that by motion. And then the third one is, you don't have to have any, oh, I'm sorry, in that middle one, so that threshold, we have a policy, DBJ, that says that if the amount is less than five thousand dollars, then the administration can make that transfer without prior approval, because the approval is given through the policy, but needs to report it to the board. Anything over five thousand dollars requires that preapproval. We haven't changed that policy, I, I wanna say it's close to twenty years off the top of my head. So there are some districts which have raised the amount in that policy to fifty thousand, and then there are other districts that have actually lowered it. Number one, they're a very small district, so, so, you know, two thousand dollars to them is the same as two hundred thousand dollars to Manchester. But then the third version of it is, you don't have to do it at all, as long as your number matches at the end of the year, the bottom-line number you spent, no more money than you were authorized to spend. Those are all board discretion things. And, you know, if you're having fiscal problems, your auditors are, are, you know, giving you, you know, twelve-page executive summaries every year, then you might wanna start exercising very specific authority. If, say, for your manifest, you know, every, every time you're going through them, and you're just checking them off, and you're just wasting time at your meetings, you might decide that shifting you might decide that shifting over to the two-person authorization is, it makes more sense for everyone. But those are places where by policy, the board is, is shifting, you know, how the administration is doing things. Strategic planning. So we talked a little bit during the evaluation process about school boards, you know, establishing goals. In that context, we were really talking about, you know, one-year goals. But, but it, you know, what the school board has the authority to do and the obligation to do, because there's a Department of Education rule that says you're supposed to do this. You are supposed to develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. It doesn't use the term strategic planning and it doesn't say what a long-range plan, you know, how, you know, how long is long-range. But it, but it is a, you know, a, a strong indicator that, you know, if you want your district to be somewhere in five years, you probably should have a plan and measurable goals for how you get there. And some are going to require, you know, three years before you can really get to the meat of, of that goal. Some might be achievable in just a few months. I had a, I had a district in private practice, well, an SAU, right? No, cooperative district where one of the, one of the towns was, was struggling for many years to withdraw. At the time, it was even harder to withdraw from a cooperative. And everybody knew that they were going to get out sooner or later because the other ones would be happy to let them go because they were just a pain. But really, the pain was they would stand in the way of any bond because if a bond passes, then the withdrawing district is still responsible for part of the debt. So if they thought they were going to be gone, why would they want to approve a long-term debt? So anyway, they, they had a very specific plan over a five-year period, how to do this without needing to lay people off, without needing to close a school before they had a new school ready. But all those things, which couldn't happen in the short term, had to be planned over a long period of time and it actually worked out fairly well. But anyway, they are helpful for your personnel. You know, do you have, you know, do you have experienced teachers that are likely to be retiring? You might be able to hold off filling some positions because you're doing this through attrition? Or, you know, are you finding that your staff within your building are, you know, they're all leaving too early? If so, then maybe you need to look at how you're compensating your less experienced teachers, you know, things like that. But instruction, capital, you know, capital reserve plan, I mean, capital maintenance plan, capital or maintenance plans tend to be the most obvious. Paths to accomplish board priorities and then efficient meetings. Why efficient meetings? Well, because if you're talking about something at a school board meeting, there should be a purpose for why you're doing that. And that, so that, you know, that purpose should relate to something that you've decided you wanted to do already and not just, you know, having conversations for the sake of, you know, having conversations without really any idea as to how it relates to the larger plan. Communication. So let's just jump through there. You know, it's, obviously, it's necessary for student achievement and administrative success. But district and board credibility and then crisis manager, management are really two very key parts. You've got various legal requirements regarding communications. You've got to do an annual report. You've got to do a family engagement approach. By the way, that's a new one that we're working on, that policy right now. And then you've got various notifications and so forth for parent or pupil rights. And then, you know, under 91A, you've got meeting notices, minutes and so forth. But, you know, we are, we have leaned heavily on the idea that boards should develop a comprehensive communication plan. We have a sample policy that's a few years old, EG, and it, and it really is help, to help a board start the process of having a plan. You know, when the crisis happens, that's not the time to think about how you're going to communicate, you know, with families or the public or emergency response about things. Your emergency response plan will probably be very well-developed with, you know, the police, the fire department and so forth. But, you know, how well does it take into account parents and so forth? You've also get, you know, you've also got to think about the different constituencies within your, within your district and how you communicate with them. You've got, you know, it's, it's getting to the point where you have folks in your community who have never owned a smartphone, have never had a computer, but they do know the newspaper and they do know where notices are posted at the, you know, whether at, at the Tom Hall and the SAU, wherever you, you know, your two postings are. But you also have, you also have parents especially in your community who, you know, they, they've never bought it, you know, they, maybe they bought a newspaper because they knew their kid's picture was in the paper, but other than that, they don't buy the newspaper. And that used to be the way that districts communicated with the general public. And then they used kids' backpacks as being the main, you know, form of communication with parents. But obviously, that's not the way we do it. But if you're using applications and programs and so forth, are they getting to all of the public? Or are they just getting to certain segments of the public? So, you know, for parents and students, most districts, I don't know if you do, you know, you have the robo-calls that will tell everybody, hey, school's canceled today. Or, by the way, something very bad happened at the school today, don't worry about it, everybody's safe. But other people don't get those messages because they're not parents of the school. So just having a community, you know, taking the time to figure out all of these things makes sense. Collective bargaining, I'm not going to talk too much about that. I did mention that one of the things that, you know, I think is important, a takeaway, is to remember that if you're on the negotiating team and the negotiating team reaches a tentative agreement, you have the duty to support that agreement. So one thing that I would suggest to boards is that they be mindful of who they put on the negotiating team. You know, in, in negotiating many of these contracts, sometimes you get somebody who just, you know, they weren't at the meeting, so they got appointed to that. They don't really want to go to the negotiating sessions and they don't. And lo and behold, a tentative, tentative agreement is reached and they won't support it. So, you know, that's one problem. They should be committed to the process. And the second one, and this has happened a couple of times in the last few years, one of which cost the district tens of thousands of dollars, was the board, you know, they, they didn't quite think about how this would play out. The board had a very strong majority, it was a very large board, had a very strong majority that, that had a certain, you know, objective in mind. And then they had two out of nine members who, you know, were of a different mindset. And they put one of those people on that, on the negotiating team, which is okay. And generally speaking, I think that deliverative bodies like school boards, it's important to have different voices and the way, all these things. But in the negotiating team, basically, that one person had veto power over what was a very strong majority because they would not agree. And it went through impasse, it went through two legal challenges, it was just a big mess. So just, you know, think about what you're doing when you're putting together your negotiating team. And then, so next one is this area here. And this does talk a little bit about the question that I had before, having to do with, you know, receiving complaints and so forth. So first, it's, it's really important to kind of remember what your function is. And I'm not going to answer the questions specifically with these slides, but it'll give us a little bit of a foundation to get through them. And maybe I'll ask that we get back to that after we skip ahead to another subject. But anyway, so when you get a complaint about an individual, when I say an individual, a student or a staff member, first remember what it is that a board member can do, which is nothing by themselves. They can't solve that problem, but they, they can do something. And the person is reaching out to you as a board member because they're looking for help. And probably you ran to, you know, be on the board to serve your community and be helpful. But, but, you know, they don't know what they're supposed to do and that's why they're reaching out to you. They don't know that you can't do anything. They know that you're on the school board, so you should be able to do something, or that's what they think. But you can do some things. So the first thing you could do is provide the roadmap for them. You know, where, where can they find the process that they need in order to approach their problem? It's easy to say, you know, you're gonna follow the chain of command, start at the lowest, you know, lowest level, but that, that really doesn't tell them all the pieces they need to do. And it doesn't tell them, you know, if they look at it, you know, it doesn't tell them, well, what happens if that doesn't work? And what happens if that doesn't work? And there are different types of complaints that have specific processes. That, you know, we used to say, just no policy KEB. So KEB is a generic, if you got a complaint about a staff member or a student, go to KEB. The problem is that there are many places where the, the process that the district has to follow is more specific. So if it's sexual harassment, you have to have a very specific process. And, and that person, in order to address that process, it's best for them to start with ACAC. It's best for the district also if they start with ACAC because if they contact the wrong person and the wrong person doesn't know what's supposed to happen, then they don't follow the right process. And, and unfortunately, you know, it is not the, I'll just give an example of it under the sexual harassment. So under sexual harassment, the federal rules that were developed in 2020 and are now still applicable. If, like, let's say you're a part-time custodian who only works on Saturdays cleaning up the gym after, you know, wreck basketball. He's, he's at home and he hears, you know, his, his kid talking to his friend. And, and they say something that, you know, guess what? That would be sexual harassment. At that very moment, your district is legally, has knowledge of that report. The superintendent, the, the school, everybody knows it, that like, the district is legally on, on, you know, charged at that moment. But does the part-time custodian know that? Probably not. But if you send them to KEB, you're, you're getting, you know, you're almost asking for a problem. Because, because it just means that, well, I'll just go talk to, you know, the, the, you know, the basketball coach and I'll tell the basketball coach that, but the basketball coach doesn't know. And so the school board member, you should know some of these policies. And, and I put these on here because those are the most important ones. So JICK, your kids getting bullied. ACA, they're getting bullied or harassed, but it's because of a protected classification or, you know, category. So it's because they're, you know, they're, you know, a different race, they're Muslim, you know, what have you. ACA, it's a very specific process that unfortunately is different than a bullying process and is unfortunately different than a sexual harassment process and different than a disability process. But if you, if you tell them to go look at AC, there is a list of, hey, here's who you go talk to. You go talk to your, the Title IX coordinator. In a district this size, I'd assume that your Title IX coordinator is probably the same as your civil rights coordinator or whatever, you know, discrimination coordinator. But if you know these policies and somebody comes and says, you know, hey, you know, this, this guy's been bothering my, you know, kid's been bothering my daughter every day. Yesterday, he pulled her drop brass strap. That, that's a sexual harassment issue. And you don't need to decide it is, but because it speaks of that, you know that ACAC is the one that they should go to. And you should be able to tell them the policy. There's only, what, five there, six? Six policies. You should be able to give them a code and tell them how to get to the policy. Many of these are, you know, are going to be covered in part within your handbook. But if you say, you know, go to our website and, you know, look for board and board policies and you can find it, or just contact the SAU or the principal's office and they, they can get you a copy of the policy. But why are you doing that? Because you're, this is how they deal with that specific problem. If you just know AC, AC will list all those and, and, you know, tell them where they should go. So that's, that's one way you help them. The other way you help them is by facilitating the oversight by administration. So if you're the one who's receiving that phone call, one thing you want to make sure of is that they're, like, if it's a close friend of yours or your neighbor, they might just be telling you because they want to tell somebody. But they don't really want it to become official yet. So sometimes you need to be clear about that. When it is certainly somebody you know, just make sure that it's because they want somebody to know. If it's just a member of the public who knows you're a school board member, but you don't really know them, they probably want somebody to know. But what you need to know at that point is just enough information to pass that to the superintendent. That's not going to be the, the, you know, the start of the process. The start of the process has to come from them using the roadmap. But you do want the superintendent to be aware that there's a problem. And, and, you know, so she's got her ears open for, to it. But all you need is enough information to just pass it along. Hey, by the way, I heard from a parent that there's a, you know, they had a problem with Mrs. Smith in the third grade. That's it. You know, the parent's name. That's all that you need to know in order to pass that along. What you don't want to do is, well, you know, what kind of problem was it? You know, who, was there anybody else there? Did anybody else see that? Have they had problems in the past? That's called an investigation. And, and that is putting, putting you at a disadvantage from being able to carry out your responsibilities. But remember, it's, it's to no, no avail because you can't do anything about it. The only thing you could do is let the superintendent know and to help them understand, you know, where the best place to start is. And we'll get to another reason why that's somewhat important. If, if you have heard from a parent about something, it's okay to say, you know, and when you go to that process, if you don't hear anything, you know, within, you know, depending on how urgent it is, you know, if it's something serious, then, you know, if you don't hear anything within the next day or two, let me know. And then you get to, you know, tell the superintendent, hey, you know, I don't know what's happening, but she says she contacted the teacher, if it's, you know, at that level, or the principal and hasn't heard anything back. Then it's okay to, to let that person just contact you again. But again, it's only for the purpose of you facilitating the administration to oversee, you know, to oversee what's supposed to happen. Yes?
What if it is a staff member has a complaint against the superintendent? We have had that and it had, it was brought to our attention that we do not have a policy or any type of plan for a, a staff member to have a, you know, to lodge a complaint against the superintendent without any, like, retaliation. There's no, we don't have anything to guide steps for that.
Yeah, so, so what should happen is that the board member who received that information should contact the board chair and the board chair should contact counsel. That, that, any, any other way of dealing with that can end up costing you tons of money. Just, just, there, there, all sorts of reasons.
So bypass the board altogether, like chair?
No, no, no.
So bypass the board altogether, like chair, council, I guess.
But the, but the reason is because, number one, you've got a contract that is worth a lot of money.
Yep.
Right? And by going to the board chair and the counsel, you're, they're going to develop the plan that might require an investigation.
Okay.
And then the investigation is what the board is going to get to make a decision.
Okay.
But, I mean, sometimes it might, you know, it might not require a lengthy investigation.
Right.
But other times, you know, it's, it's going to. And if it's handled incorrectly, contract damages are, can be pretty high in a superintendent's contract. Also, in certain circumstances, because, you know, board member, boards have been known to be leaky when there's something exciting going on, that can be harmful to a reputation. And if you're, you know, if the person just had a grudge and it turns out it was incorrect, not only do you have your contract, but it's harmed their reputation in their search for another job. So there's reputational harm as well. You know, one school board in the state just paid half a million dollars to a superintendent where it was handled incorrectly. So, you know, it, it, that's why it's chair and counsel. Because, yeah, it, just to make sure that the pro, number one, you've got also analyze what the contract says because the contract might have very specific provisions about, you know, how that's supposed to work. So the, the real reason for doing that in that instance is to make sure that you don't create a bigger problem for the, you know, for the, for the board and the district.
Yep, that makes sense.
But it, but it is not one where the, you know, board chair ultimately is making all the decisions. It's just working with counsel to, to handle the process correctly.
Okay.
And if it's a serious issue, then it, it's going to be something where a counselor says, you know, we go to the board and we, you know, get direction. Okay, let's see, wait this up. Come on. This one just basically, it says student issues, but it is largely the same and I'm not going to go through it. But I, I guess it does trigger one thing, this bottom left-hand quarter. So one of the reasons why school board members, you know, not just because you as an individual person, but even as a whole body, don't get involved too early in, in, you know, issues that involve individual rights is because you are also going to be charged perhaps as acting as an appeal body or a hearing officer. And being involved too much too early can put you in a position of needing to recuse yourself from that, that process, which would be unfortunate, but it is also sort of a dereliction of your own duty because you have the duty to do this thing. So I'm gonna jump ahead. So I'm not gonna talk about the hiring, so, a little bit. So certified personnel, teachers and, and your principals and other, you know, people with certifications from the Department of Education, excluding paraprofessionals and a couple of others. But, so paraprofessionals are not considered certified personnel, even though you probably have some or many pairs that, that have certification. But anyway, under a couple of statutes and Department of Education regulations, the superintendent has to nominate certified personnel for the board to hire them. If the superintendent doesn't nominate them, the board can't hire them. Same thing with renewal. If the superintendent does not renominate somebody who's a certified person for a new contract, the board can't reelect them. That's the language that's in the statute. The only time a certified person can be given a contract despite the superintendent's failure to nominate is actually renewal. So if a tenured teacher is not nominated by the superintendent, has to be a tenured person, then the tenured person can request a hearing from the school board. School board can hear that person's case and then decide to overrule the superintendent. But that is the only situation where a person requiring certification to be employed in a position can be, you know, rehired by the, by the school board without the superintendent's input. The other thing on the right, so other employees, you can either do, you know, use, many smaller districts especially use the same process that is used by teachers so that the, the superintendent is nominating people, but it's the school board that's doing the final hire. But that's not required. By your policy and your practice, you can have, you know, I, I can guarantee you that the school board is not hiring the, the part-time custodian in Manchester. That's being done at the administrative level. The little tiny districts like Hill, that, like I said, they got 50 kids. They're very involved in who's in there, you know, being paid by, by the district. So, you know, it's one of those places where the board can shift how a process works. And then the bottom one is really talking about, you know, the same kind of process that we talked about for students. You've got policies that establish conduct, discipline, expectations for your employees. The administration is charged with directing and supervising the work of all employees. So that's that whole thing about, you know, you've got one employee and then the superintendent is responsible for the remaining ones. But then the school board comes back into the process for dismissals, non-renewals, grievances under your collective bargaining agreement. And I know I've hit my 90 minutes almost, I guess I have a few more minutes. I guess what are they, yeah, it's about 90 minutes now. So I'm, can stop, I can keep going. Up to you. I can answer some questions?
Yeah.
Let me, let me do this one thing just about the quasi-judicial because it does bring it back and I have touched on it a little bit. When, you know, there are various times when the school board is required under statutes, regulations, or even its own policies where the board is required to act in a quasi-judicial capacity. And that is the place where it is very different than all of the other work that you do. Because in this instance, you're the ones who are responsible for meeting out due process. And, and it's, it's really this area that underscores the, the importance of a board member and a school board staying out of the investigative process. Doesn't matter how bad you've heard, you know, you, 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 you're not gonna be ignorant of what happened. So, you know, the kid got dragged out of the school in handcuffs, you're gonna know about it. You're gonna know who it was, you're probably gonna hear, you know, if it'll be in the newspaper, it'll be in Facebook. You're gonna hear information. That's, that passively receiving information is, is not something that you can avoid. What you can avoid is asking questions, looking for people who might know more information, you know, drilling your own kids about, hey, what, you know, how is this kid in class? Those things are things you should never do. And the reason is due process. What do we think about, you know, when we think about due process? A fair and impartial judge and the ability to hear, challenge evidence and testimony. Every time you ask a question about something that happened that you don't need to know, you're asking for information that the person who is, you know, it, it, whose case you're about to hear doesn't hear, isn't able to challenge that thing. You know, you might hear something about a teacher this year, but it never really gets that big. You know, there was a complaint, it was investigated, maybe it was finding and the superintendent gave that person reprimand. All you knew about was the initial complaint and you directed it to the superintendent. It was handled the way it was supposed to be handled, consistent with the collective bargaining agreement and applicable law. But maybe you had some information about that and then next year, something else happens. If you've gotten information about this other thing back here and you're carrying it forward to this thing, but it's not part of what's happening this year, they're not able to hear what you're considering at the time you're deciding that case. You're like, you have to decide that case on what's in front of you at that case. And then, you know, the other part of it is, not only are you depriving the person of hearing the evidence and the testimony, you're also forming an opinion. The more information you get, the more you're forming an opinion and prejudging something. So those are, you know, really important reasons why you need to stay out of that. When I, I had a school board once, they didn't talk to me before they did the thing that they did. But, but when it got time to a hearing and I read them, you know, here's the standard for when you need to recuse yourself. Seven school board members, six recused themselves. The other one didn't recuse himself because he wasn't at the meeting where they did the thing that they shouldn't have done. But what that meant is we had to go find alternate school board members. It created a huge expense, didn't result in a good, you know, in my view. I think the, the alternates all got it wrong. So it's just a big mess. So it's just easier to just stay within your lane and let the process work itself out. So there we go. And then the rest of it, I think, is really just about the right to know law.
Can I just ask a question about that? When you say that we're gonna conduct various hearings, we were gonna have a hearing once and I had a list of like things that I thought the board should see for that hearing. Would that be proper if we were coming to our own little hearing?
No.
No?
No.
Couldn't ask them like?
No, no, because, especially if it's an employee.
No, no, but for, for the hearing itself, to provide those things with everybody there at the time of the hearing?
No, because, and, and the reason, if it's, so for an employee, the reason why is because you have a collective bargaining agreement, which is not even a collective bargaining agreement. You have a collective bargaining statute and you have teacher rights. And it, it, think of it as a criminal case.
Right.
So, you know, somebody gets charged with, you know, DWI and, and, you know, a jury member, you know, wants to ask about why he beat his wife. It's got nothing to do with it. And not only that, they didn't prepare for that, it just came out of the blue. So it, it basically, when you're, especially with, you know, union employees, you, the piece of paper that says you are being fired or the piece of paper that says you were not renewed because of these three things.
Right.
Only those three things. And, and, you know, a school board member can ask questions usually at those hearings that relate to those three things.
Right. No, the question was directed to the superintendent, not the staff, not, not to the staff, just.
Well, yeah, but, but they still have to relate to whatever is specifically before there.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I think of it as the exhibits for the hearing, essentially. The proofs as to why you got.
Right, but you're not the prosecutor in that case. You are the, the jury.
So you can't ask for records or anything like that? Any information that would help you make a decision or not?
It, it, it basically, you know, there's too many variables.
Absolutely.
But anything that comes out of the blue that ends up, you know, that, that the union can point to and say, this shouldn't have happened at the hearing.
Yeah.
Is, is going to be a leverage for undoing it.
Right. Yeah, I don't think it was a staff thing, it, it might be totally.
If I, if I hear you correctly, in that case, if you had that information, that should go to the board chair and then to the attorney and not be collected.
Right, no, I sent an email to the board saying, this is the information I think we should have for this hearing. We never had the hearing.
Right.
But that was, it was just like, oh, well, if this is the issue that we're having, can we have these things brought to the board?
I think that should be up to our attorney for it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's usually, so the student ones tend to be, you know, mushier and, you know, quite frequently, student ones, it's really just the parent, so it's not as formalized. But, you know, especially when you're talking about, so if this, if you're having a hearing, especially about dismissals or non-renewals, just know that even if the person is not a union member, they are still covered by the collective bargaining agreement and the union is going to fight you.
Yes.
Like really fight you. And it is going to cost you money. And if you, you know, heck up unnecessarily, it will cost you more money. And, and, you know, this has to do with the refusal thing as well. There was a case, luckily it was not one of my cases, but it was a case in a district that I represented after this happened, but school board didn't do it correctly, let's just say. And it, they, you know, they ruled against the teacher. Teacher then went to arbitration and the, everybody fought over how the arbitration was gonna work. So it, the, so the event happened in like October of one year. The hearing didn't happen until like January or February. The arbitration didn't happen until almost a year after the original hearing. And the arbitrator ruled that the school board had acted improperly and had to rehire the teacher. So now the school district has an employee that they don't want and they don't have any witnesses because the witness, the key witness graduated and another witness was an employee and they'd left the district. So they had no control over that. So basically, they just ended up paying the teacher a whole bunch of money to go away. So there were, you know, there are, there are rules of how these things work. And, you know, depending on, you know, what, what the stakes are in the game, you wanna be even more careful about how they work. But like I said, the family ones tend to be a, a lit, much softer. And the board, you know, you, you're dealing with your own community members. But even then, if you've got a, you know, a kid who did something bad and the family's got some money, you know, I've been to student hearings where you got five attorneys in the room, so. Oh, yes.
I have a question on non-public sessions.
Yes.
Because, you know, obviously best practice is to do as much in the light open as we can. With our minutes, like how to phrase this question? So sometimes when you're in non-public, you take a vote on something.
Yep.
But say we seal the minutes because there's other stuff that happened that we don't want to be out in the public right now. Should we come back in public and reflect that vote? So say, or, or another way of putting it, say we have a hearing, like a manifest hardship hearing.
Right.
Can we publicly have minutes that just say, we had this hearing, this is how we voted? And that's the minutes and there's no need to seal them? Because there are no names, there's no identifying inter, information about a family?
So it, it, that might be very fact-specific. So if it's, you're a small district, so the mere fact that you don't use a student's name doesn't mean that everybody doesn't know who you're talking about. So I would say in a manifest hardship, you'd have to be real careful about that. You know, cert, it's, you know, similar to a special ed student where, you know, you're, you know, maybe a special ed student who did something very bad, but because of special education laws and, and processes, you know, the, how it's handled looks very differently than it would if it was a non-special ed kid. And the mere fact that you don't say the kid's name in the minutes doesn't mean that everybody, you know, doesn't know who you were, you know, who you were talking about. You know, personally identifiable information under the statute and under, under both federal statute and state statute is information that a re, a person within the community would reasonably able to identify the person about whom that information, you know, pertains. The, the, you know, assuming that the non-public conversation wasn't in of itself, I'd say the, the decision wasn't in of itself, you know, something that's, let's take a step back. So there are reasons to go into non-public session and they're all, you know, very, very specific. If the conversation is maybe not, you know, not requiring a strong decision, then you probably can water down the minutes to the extent that, you know, the public can be at least informed about, you know, the general idea. But remember, you made a motion that tells the public what it is you were going in to talk about. And, and that by itself can be enough. But let's. But let's say the superintendent has something to say about an employee. It's not going anywhere, um, but, but it's something that superintendent feels that the board should know. Um, so you go into, um, uh, non-public to protect the reputation of a person who's not a board member. They have the conversation, it's not going to result in discipline, it's just something, here's a heads up. Um, then, you know, you could easily say, you know, not, not seal the minutes. There's no requirement, there's no need to have identifying information in the minutes. So therefore you do the minutes in such a way that the public can see, um, generally what happened, there were no action was taken. So we just, uh, you know, they discussed a rep, uh, a matter that, uh, would have adversely affected the uh, reputation of a person who's not a member of the board, no action was taken. Boom. However, um, you know, if you're going in, everybody knows you're going in under, um, you know, uh, paragraph A, uh, compensation or discipline of an employee. And everybody knows that this employee's been out of the building for three weeks. And they, you know, they see the person going into the thing, um, you, you, you wouldn't be able to say, and, and the board approved a non-renewal of the teacher or something like that. Um, but the other thing about minutes and so, you know, I do believe that to the extent you can do non-public minutes in a way that gives information to the public, but doesn't impact, you know, the reason you were in non-public in the first place. Um, then, then you should do that, you know, that, that, um, the minutes and try to be as transparent as possible. But there are times when, um, even in that same circumstance that I gave you about, you know, you know, maybe you're talking about an employee, you're not taking any action. But, you know, maybe this is something that, um, could possibly happen again. You know, they're trying to manage the situation. Um, and you, it's important that the record reflect who that person is. Because maybe it's not gonna be this year. You know, maybe the thing happened in, you know, late, late May. Um, and, you know, you, you dealt with it, but, um, you know, maybe it's gonna come back next year too, or, or a similar situation. And so you want a record that the board talked about it. Um, so, I mean, the art of, the art of minute-taking is, uh, you know, uh.
That's why we have Priscilla.
The what?
That's why we have Priscilla.
Yep, yep. Bless you. So. Yeah. Done with me?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sure. So one thing I'd say, I mean, you know, I, I, I've probably spoken to, you know, at least a third of the people in this room. But, um, the very, the very last, well, I don't say that in a negative way, again, you know. The next best thing about doing the trainings is actually talking to people. But my contact information is on, on, at, at the last slide there. Um, if you have questions about the right to no law, or you think about something that we talked about tonight that, that, you know, you just thought about it on the ride home. Um, or just general questions about policies or o- other legal things. Um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to at least take the call. If I can answer it, I'll answer it. If I think it's something that requires private counsel, then that'll be the answer. Um, the one thing I, you know, we, we avoid, uh, as best as possible is, uh, you know, inter-board squabbling. Um, you know, the, it, I hate it when somebody calls me, you know, eight thirty in the morning and they say, hey, is it legal if the board did this? And it's like, I'm not gonna tell you that. You can ask me hypothetically if the board might do that, but maybe I'll answer that question. So be a little more clever.
You can just leave that there, I'm gonna grab it in a minute.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Will.
Sure. Well, again, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
No, that's okay.
Drive safely, that's a long drive.
Yeah, long drive.
Well, you know what's funny is like, when I first got to NHSBA, it was in the early days of doing webinars. And, you know, you couldn't see anybody. And I, I do these webinars at nighttime. Uh, I'm the only one in the office, you can't see anybody, and God forbid, nobody asks a question. So you're there for two hours and you leave and you're like, I don't even know if anybody heard. And the only wa- only way I would know is, you know, somebody might send me an email the next day, oh, that was great, or, hey, you know, I have this question, but. But, you know, I used to feel like, you know, you'd see the, think about the, the disc jockey who had the, the night shift. You know, sitting there talking to themselves. But anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take my water with me.
All your tabs.
If you guys wanna do policies while I get connected, then I can just shoot this real quick.
Okay.
Jeez, Aaron. Is that Aaron again?
Yeah, Aaron.
That's why, that's why we got the extended warranty.
There's no money in the budget. Jeff's calling and saying, sure.
All right, so we have three policies there for second reading. The first one is, uh, EHAG, Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. It's the second reading.
Um, hang on, what is this? Oh, okay. So. This, okay, so this is the, the policy that, we didn't vote to have those security data at last time. The policy only states, like, what we're gonna do when we have AI or to use AI, but we didn't, we didn't vote on the program, did they?
No, because it was the first reading.
Oh, okay.
We did talk about though, um, what Jeff recommended.
Yep.
Um, if there's a fee that's, that's associated with it, Khan Mingo's free, so.
Okay, so, but this is.
Well, that would allow us, the policy would allow us to.
Okay. Can we table this policy, please?
Uh, question for Jeff, if it's tabled, are we putting ourselves or our students in jeopardy without? And I, and I know I'm not phrasing it the right way, but without Khan Academy or something in place is my question, because AI is available.
They're gonna use it, students are gonna use it. And if we, uh, my opinion on, on this as a tech professional and someone who uses AI almost every day. Um, the, the Khan Academy is, is an excellent option because it, they actually do something called, it's not, uh, so are you familiar with the term sandboxing?
I know Khan Economy, uh, Academy, yeah.
It closes off their, their offering in a, in its own space on the internet. It doesn't ask for information. It also doesn't give information. It only uses Khan Academy's, um, inherent database.
Okay.
So i- it's also only a tutoring AI. So unlike ChatGPT, you guys probably have heard of that, right?
Yeah.
That's a fully generative AI that uses the internet real time. So if you put something in there, it's actually looking for information as you type. So if you type the same question three times in a row, you may get three different answers.
Right.
That will not happen in Khan Academy. Because it doesn't, i- it only generates from the data that it's allowed to do, to generate from.
So it's kind of vetted AI?
It's, it's one hundred percent vetted by Khan Academy.
I. I really feel like the board needs this to be its own topic in a meeting before we approve this policy. And I don't know, my, my reason for bringing this up in this way is that I feel like in order for me to feel comfortable, I need to know exactly how it's gonna be used, because I have, we all know that AI can be used for everything right now. And if not properly used in an educational environment, it can be a way to not enhance the learning experience, but to give the quick layout.
Yep.
Um, and I, I don't know enough about this that I feel comfortable approving this policy without a little bit more of a presentation around exactly how it's gonna be implemented, exactly how the teachers are gonna utilize it, so on and so forth. So that's my own feeling on it, I just.
I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Have a.
I was gonna counter that and I might be wrong. I was thinking we want to adopt the policy because in here, if we don't have a policy, it's the Wild West. And the teachers can do whatever they want right now, bring in whatever they want, the kids can bring in whatever we want. Under this policy, we're saying, nobody can bring an AI tool into the computer system here without your or your approval. So if we don't have the policy in place, I hear, I hear what you're saying. But to not adopt it right now, we're leaving ourselves open completely.
The way I saw the policy, when I read it from the state, sorry, is, is that it's guidance. It's, it's not an approval for anything.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's kinda how I, this doesn't lock down a particular program. This doesn't, this is still the Wild West. If we adopt the policy as is, it's saying bring in AI. It's not saying, it's not putting up the guardrails, I feel like that, well, I shouldn't say I feel like, I just, it's lacking those guardrails. And that's, that's where I, you know, I wanna be more comfortable with it. Um, but, I mean, I, 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 I support tabling it at least until we can have, you know, a little bit more of a detailed conversation around it, because this, I think, is a big turning point for our educational environment.
Yeah, I just, and I'm, I'm wondering, um, who's gonna teach it? When, like, what's the time during the day that is gonna be used, uh, all, all day, every day, um?
So.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So during our, um, first few days of school, Jeff is actually meeting with the teachers
Right.
to do a presentation on this and how to use it. So we are, we would be training our teachers the first day of school of.
It's, it, it's also, I, I need to be really specific. Khan Mingo is the only one that I would ever see in the school at this point. But all, it's not AI like you guys think it is. It's actually just a tutoring tool. If, if a student, here's an example, if a student went in and said, and were given an algebra problem. If they entered that algebra problem into, into Khan Mingo and it said, answer this question for me. It, it would actually tell them no. It would say, let's think about how we want to answer this question. And then it would go through options. And then it would say, do you like football? Do you like basketball? Do you like writing? And then the student would say, I like writing. It would then put that expression, that algebraic expression into terms that the student can, can actually understand based on the information that they're given. It never at any time will answer any of the questions directly for them. It's, it's the same for teachers. Teachers cannot create curriculum in the, inside Khan Mingo. It, it will give them suggestions. If they create, um, it would, if, if they lay out what they want for curriculum, or their school does, and they enter it, it will help them in guiding them for creating tests. And then if they enter that, i- if they enter their test that they have, it's multiple choice or something simple, it will actually grade those tests. But it cannot and will not, because of the, the guardrails that Khan Mingo has put into it, and this is why the state has adopted it. It doesn't do the work for them.
So I feel like this is two different discussions. I feel like we have a policy in front of us that talks about the use of generative artificial intelligence. And we're having a discussion about a tool.
Yep.
For the school to utilize.
Understood.
So I feel like they're, they're separate. And I, I don't know why we need to approve this policy in order to approve a tool.
Um, I think, uh, well, from the policy, the policy will allow Donna to make the decision on what, what tools the school actually uses. And, and also restrict what the school actually is you, is or isn't using. And it, it of course will not prevent kids and teachers from using AI at home. It will prevent them from using it in the school.
Well, yeah, and I, I mean, we try our best to do what we can in our environment here, because once kids go home, they go home. So we have to, you know, do our best to, to, um, for them, but, um, anyway, this is second reading, I don't know. How the board feels.
Do we wanna, um, table till next meeting? I mean, was that status, status of school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that?
Next week?
Would that be too lo- too long?
Hey, he's gonna do a training. What, um.
The beginning.
Yeah.
At the beginning of school. And this does, the, on the C, no generative AI tool may be introduced in the district's computer and network system without prior approval from the superintendent or the designee. So, I mean, I think it leaves it with our superintendent, which we say we should.
Okay, so.
Follow her recommendation.
I think.
Go ahead, go ahead. You were speaking.
I don't know. Let's, um, actually, I, I will make a motion to approve policy EHAG, Use of Generative, Generative Artificial Intelligence.
You'll make a motion?
I, I'm making a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Heather, did you?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I just want, I, because second for discussion, I just, my only other discussion would be um, how often the students are, you know, gonna be using it, um. You know, everything that comes up is always, it's, you know, there's so much stuff on the computer and I, you know, I'm, I'm not a big fan of that. And I understand we have tools to help learn. But I don't want tools to, like, take away their, you know, abilities to open their mind more instead of looking at a tablet or something, say, oh, I can do it like this, or that, that's my concern, that's all, so.
So just to, you know, we do, in this policy, Donna will develop the plan for the whole thing. And then that plan comes to us for review every year.
Okay.
So we're, so.
Yep, yeah.
So we're still seeing.
It's low?
I would think so in here.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, because a plan can be changed.
Right.
Yes.
Policy can on.
Yes.
So we never put names of.
Yes.
And the policy can be changed too, I mean, if we need to go back.
It just takes longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, next policy, we have, uh, policy AB, New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights, second reading.
I make a motion to approve policy AB, New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights.
I second it.
Discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then lastly, we have policy JICJ, Unauthorized Communication Devices, secondary reading.
I make a motion to approve policy JICJ, Unauthorized Communication Devices.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted the board to be aware that these policies now have to go in the, in the student handbook.
Yes.
Because these are the policies, so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that I was gonna have, that I was gonna have. All right, I have like two minutes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see enough.
We can extend.
I think this, I think this is, this, we have a second public comment that was stated, but that's it, so.
Between that and the minutes.
Yeah.
So, so just real quick, so this is currently, let me make this, this is currently what our website looks like, all right? So I'm gonna show you the website that, um, we've been working on to create for our staff. Because, I mean, for, for our community, for our families, because one of, one of the main goals that I really, I, I really feel strongly with is, um, community relationships, getting our word out, being able to, parents to be able to come on and find things. People from the community being able to come on, come onto our website and find things. It's very difficult. I have a high time maneuvering this site. So what, so what I've done is, is, um, put together and the, the new, so you know, the new website does cost more money than this current website. However, it's not going to impact the budget at all. Because, um, when Jeff and I and the two, other two administrators, Erin and, oh, do you have a question?
Um, I have a comment, um, just because it, it, it costs more, yes, but you know, just because it costs less, no one's using it, it's useless.
Correct, correct. Well, and it, and I just wanna say that when we all met, Melissa, and all of us all met. Um, the, we were able to eliminate some of the programs that were not being used or shouldn't be used in our district because they didn't, uh, they were a breach of the, the data privacy. They were breach of the the data privacy agreements that we have with other, um, within the state. And so we were able to utilize some of that money for this new program, I mean, for this new, um, one here, and this is going to be, this would go live on, um. Before the break, so I'm just gonna, I just wanna get it, so this is now what our poli- what it would look like. So this right here is the S A U site, alright, and so you can see we can do pictures on it. Then you link down, there's the three, the three bars, so we can put up to some, we can put up to, I think, up to six bars here. So that way it's easier for families to get information. Then we have our informational stuff here. And then down here, we don't have, we just have the one right now because this right here will be linked to Facebook. So all of our Facebook posts will also show up here, so these are our live feeds, so we can also send things out that way. Then we have an event calendar that will, um, parents can link on the event calendar this way, and then this here is just in informational where to find us. But one of the other pieces of this is over here, this menu bar is going to give you all this information spread out for you, so if you.
That's the best.
If you, yes, so if you, so I'll show you, so if you click on any of this here, you'll get information, so I'll just show you. If you remember, when we go to here, our website, and we go to here. And we go to board, and we go to policies, this is currently what your policies look like, right? Here's your policies. Right, so this right here is all your policies. Okay, so now I'm going to show you, and I have to just turn my head back this way, so if I go here and I go to policies and procedures, here's now what your policies look like.
Oh, nice.
So there's your policies, and it tells you what A's A's for, so if I wanna look at my A policies, I go up here and I click this. And there's my A policies.
Yeah.
Right, and so you can do that with every one of your policies.
Yeah.
It all the way through, so that's just.
Like our book.
Yeah, it's, they do it on the Hampshire School Board Association website too.
Yes, so the same thing, school calendar for our parents, they come here, they can download a PDF, they can do it digitally, or it's right down below.
Thank you, I've been asking for the digital calendar the entire time I've been on here.
Oh, yeah, so.
Now I no longer have a kid in the school.
So, yeah.
You still need to know it.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so there's, so there's the, all the calendar and stuff there, um. I'm trying to look that way and maneuver my thing, but it has, anything that you could possibly imagine is on here. Here's all of our business office information, so if we wanna know anything from the business office, here's stuff from the business office, these are all live links. So these, this will link you directly to those staff members. But the other piece of this is, you have this little thing up here and you can change, so everything that you saw is S A U. Now we go here and look at this, now we got Paul School. So here's Paul School, so now we can be on Paul Schools, and so you'll see here's where the information that parents can gather.
Yep.
Same thing, it's, it has the same format all the way down, this will be our, um, the pause saying there, but it has this stuff here. And then you go up here, this menu is a little bit different because it has over here about our school, so it has, so, um, you know, administrators. Here's a little blurb about the administrators and how to get ahold of the administrators.
Yeah.
Um, so we had, so this is the new site, nurse's office, and you know, it breaks it all down for them here, so this is a a lot different. So we now have our families and transition page that parents can go to, anybody that is, um, you know, McKenney dental stuff, which we're supposed to have by law.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's more user friendly, and I think there's so much more information on here for our staff and students and families. And then we're also, if you notice here on Alma, and sorry, we're doing this as you, as you're looking. So here is a link for Alma, we're also, while we're building this, so we have a lot of things going on, Jeff is really securing our, our, um, information. So it doesn't get leaked out, we don't have to worry about anybody breaking into our thing, so we have that big thing going on. We also have, um, our, a lot of our Alma stuff that's that's going on, so we have that big project that's going on. And with this Alma project, it's going to allow our parents this year to now not do paper copies anymore. Now they're going to be able to register through this link, so we're no longer sending home paper, and and this link will go live before the kids go to school. So one of the things that we're having is our kids are showing up at school without us having any emergency information.
Right, yeah.
Now they go in, they do this, it's all in there, and it's laid out for them, and some of the documents are legal that we didn't have before, so I made sure they're in here. So as a parent, when you go in and you do that, you get this one, it gets checked off, you go to the next one, it gets checked off. And then what we've embedded in there is the free and reduced lunch application, so now parents are gonna have the access. Access to do the free and reduced lunch application online instead of having the paper copy, because the paper copy you send to school with your kid, you don't want your kid showing, look how much my parents made, you know, anything like that. And it's taken away all of that.
That's just the privacy issue, so it's more contained and more private.
The best part, if you see this logo up here, eventually, what's this logo in the Paul School, so that is now going to be. An app in the App Store, because now you can download it on your phone, so you'll have an app on your phone now, so parents. Cuz parent, a lot of parents no longer use this, they use their phone.
Yeah.
So now they'll have an app on their phone and they'll be able to access all of this information. They'll be able to get alerts because this is going to link directly to Alma.
Yeah.
So if we send out any alerts to Alma, they're gonna get it right on their phones. And they can, they can sign their children up right on their phone, they can do, they can check grades, they'll be able to check grades and everything right on their phone. Because this link, it's it's live, like, live right now, but it brings you right to your Alma portal, so that way you can can see that. So that's one of the, and there's still more things that, you know, that I'm gonna be adding to this as we move on, you know, some contact information, those types of things, but. Um, this is everything that that we feel that our our families should be getting more, it's more information for our families. Versus what they were getting on on the other side, right, cuz we wanted to transparent.
It's so much.
Yeah.
It's so much easier to get to.
And so, and it's, and it's. It looks so much, in a sense, more professional, right, and it's, yes, it is, and that was the, that was one of the biggest things that sold us on it, is that it's user friendly.
It's user friendly.
These, these banners right here, we can change those, um, to different things that we wanna change them to, but it's just a way for parents, it's just. Right up, right, almost like in your face on important information that's happening.
Absolutely.
So.
That's great.
I, we did, um, get, we did go, we did con- I contacted three people, um. This was the best, the the best looking and the more we could receive through this, through this, um, program, through Aptige than others.
Have a question.
Yeah.
We've had many people try to do our website and and then try to make the old websites inactive and, you know, so they're not reaching out to the wrong people. Cuz those other websites are still active and, oh, we're gonna forward the information now, and. Are we now gonna make sure our old websites aren't working, not active, that people can't be reaching out to the wrong person?
So, so actually, we own the domain, so the domain is the S A U one-on-one dot org. What what we're gonna do is when we go live, the go live actually means that we're taking it from where it is now, the page where it is, it's gonna be left at on a local database. And it'll go straight to that one, so it won't even exist on the internet anymore. It'll be like cached pages you may be able to find from ten years ago or whatever, but you, whenever you type it in, it'll go right to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, was an issue that we had was that you do a Google search for the Paul School and you'd get some sort of old page that would pop up, you know.
Yeah.
With all the old members and all the old information.
Yeah.
Caused a problem for a little while.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that won't happen, um, the, another good thing about Aptige is they're, they're gonna scrub all our links, so they'll remove all the old links while we're doing it. That's part of that link.
That was the other thing, is you could hit those old links and then pull up old information, so that's fantastic, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they're, they're really working great with us, but, look here, so if I, I click on school board members, so now here is all the members with your, with your links. And these right here are the presentations from tonight, so if you click on these, these will, they'll pop up for you to be able to view them, so if you, so see, so. If somebody wants just to know the stuff that we did last night, now it's all gonna be on there, so we'll keep this type of stuff on there for people to be able to see.
Nice. Yeah.
Awesome.
There's the calendar, there's our, our meeting minutes, I haven't, um, done all of it yet, but if I look, I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go to meeting notices just for right now so you can see, so see, if I go on here, now it's here versus the big long of all the minutes of the last like twenty years.
Yeah, yeah.
And then when you click on to, is it agenda that I just did? Now here it's broken down by years now versus having all of them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know, right?
So when you do open them, it it does break it down like this, but at least, I mean, you had every single year like this on your page, so you just.
On the entire page, oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I noticed it was, oh, there was a lot, I noticed a lot of quite a few things, but, but yeah, so, you know, trying to make it. So that way it's a a little bit more user friendly, same thing with, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks fantastic.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Hopefully this will be the last one that we need and have.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know how many times we've done the website, or people in charge of it, or who else is now gonna clean it up, or.
It's beautiful.
I don't think, and I don't think it was done, I think people were telling us it was being done, and I really don't think, I think.
How many people we paid?
People thought that someone else was doing it, that's what I think happened.
Yeah, and we'll just, we'll tap people, like, this is your job to do this, and this is your job to do this, and we will oversee it.
Yeah.
The great thing about this is what we're gonna do is we're putting something in place, so people can, um, there's certain people that can post it, but you get approval first. But it has to go through an approval process, so people aren't just posting anything out there.
Does it go through to you?
It goes, it probably will go to Asia, and Asia will tap me and say, hey, we got something you need to look at, so.
Good, that's great.
That's fantastic.
I also just wanted to just point out one more thing that, um, here we now have our facilities. And I'd like to send with you tonight, if you want it, um, I went on our, I took our policies. And actually created a new facilities form that actually has everything broken down, and it talks about the fact that people need to have a waiver. And then it puts the link to our policies on there that they need to follow, and then it also, because this policy right here, um, this is also supposed to be signed. When, um, somebody rents a place, and that stuff, I don't think that stuff was getting done, so now they have to send both the forms and this.
Little links on there, interactive, like, can they click?
Well, these are our, yeah, these are our policies.
Oh, I love it when they're interactive.
Yes, yes, so it links to our policies, so that way we now have, um, this new.
That's awesome.
Well, I was like, well, since we're doing this, I'm not, it's my, I, what was I saying today, it's my ADHD, I used to do that.
Um, I I do have a suggestion coming into the fall and winter, is that I know we've tried to collaborate with the rec as much as possible because of basketball schedules and indoor sports and things like that. Well, can, will there be the ability for you guys to maybe have a link back and forth from their website to ours and so forth, so. Parents can go here and then get the rec calendar for like gym usage and all that sort of stuff?
So, they, I know there's a, we met with the rec, and I know that there's an internal calendar that we use. That, um, just so that we can make sure they're not using the facility or we're not using the facility, that type of link. But if if, um, we would have to input their stuff into our calendar, but it's not very, it's not very difficult to do. So if we wanted to to put, because they're our kids, right, so if we wanted to put when basketball games were, you know, if we don't have a basketball team and we wanted to put on. When the basketball games were, we could, it's very easy enough for them to just send their calendar over and us to.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be.
Cuz we have that whole section down the bottom that is, that has our calendar, I mean, I can put, I, I can put one in there, yeah.
Analytics. Well.
Yeah.
I was just thinking even a button to Parks and Rec.
Oh, yeah, I guess, so I do.
You know, like, because the the, we have so many things and the rec does so many events too, to be able to like have the upcoming rec events, you know.
So I. So I have, so I have resources, so if they went here to the town website, one and like, oh, I think Park and Rec, so yeah, it is up there, so I did put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, go back.
Let me just, I'm trying to do it again that way. So, right here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there.
So there it is, so we do have it on there. So, yeah, see that?
Yeah. Instead of having it in resources, having it more visible.
Like the dropdown, do you want the dropdown?
Yeah. You know.
S A U, Paul School.
So I could, so what I could do.
And that's up to you and Alyssa, but I just think having more visibility to it than having it sit in resources a couple clicks back, cuz nobody's gonna really know that it's there.
We, um, at the school, we do get a lot of calls about, like, do you guys know when the thing is?
That's what exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying, so if we had a click, have it on the main page, but that's.
On the main page or on the, on the, the, um.
It's, I don't know, I don't know.
We can also post it on the main page in a banner.
Yeah, perfect.
You know what I mean, Donna?
Yeah, but, but I think that we're gonna wanna make sure that we have our our stuff up there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Easy, we can figure that out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you don't need to do it.
I can do a, um. I add. Can I put this?
And I'm sure the P T A, the P T A will have their thing, there's notices up there too, right, like.
Yeah, well, P T A is part of the school.
Yeah.
And so I, you know, and that's one of the discussions that I had with, um, the Park and Recs, right, is is having that conversation. P T A only exists because it's joined with the school, so it is part of the school, and a lot of stuff that they do are for our kids, the fundraising and stuff that they do, so.
Right.
So I did have that conversation with them, and they understood, um, I can, I can add. Hey, let me just get that. Cuz this is what I love about this thing, let me just go back, did I have the Park and Rec still up somewhere? That's why, I've learned so much about this program that, I just have way too many tabs open, Jeff's probably over there dying right now.
No, your computer is.
They just updated ours, they have more than ten tabs open.
I'm gonna kill you later.
It's just like, you know, handwriting all this stuff.
It's, it's more the paper to me, for me.
So I can just, I'm just gonna do this for just one second, just to see. So now I just put it here, but let me just. So now. If I publish it. And now come over to my menu. Just gotta refresh, cuz it's, I'm in the work, working mode, am I in? So now I should have it. There'll be a, so I can put a, I can put a.
That'll be great.
A link right on there that just says.
Yeah, something, or, yeah.
I think I put it under that.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, so see, so a parent, but I'll make it so it's, it won't, but you can click right on that and it's right to it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would be, I think that would be awesome.
So I can, I can do that, so that way it's it's part of it, so it'll be under parent, and I'll put that on the, on the Paul, Paul School page, so that way.
Alyssa will appreciate that, I'm sure, too.
Yeah.
That's a, that's really amazing.
Do you need anything from us?
Just, you're okay, just, it seems like everybody's comes up and like, yeah, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Are you okay?
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
We agree.
Yeah.
And don't forget, we have the barbecue too coming up.
Yay.
Yeah.
We just have everybody there, I'll post for it, even though it's not considered a meeting, that just that way if there's more than one of you together and you're talking, people aren't like, oh, the Lions on the board.
No, I'm there, I'm a, I'm a Lions member, I'm there as a Lions member.
Okay.
You're always a school board member.
Yeah. Could I get a motion to go into a quick non-public?
I make a motion to go into non-public under ninety, um, R S A ninety-one, A three, two, C.
Second.
Alright, what call?
What I?
Call on Zara.
Call for my guy.
Hello, Farah. Uh, we'll cast aside.
Okay, perfect.